Here we go. We are going live right now. I'm going to let everybody in.
I assume we'll go right to public hearing and then back to the regular agenda.
Yep.
Yep, that makes sense.
Um, let's see.
We have to call a meeting to order.
Yep. Did we have to call it?
Well, you already did that.
Yeah.
Don't you have to say the governor's stuff?
I have to say the governor's stuff, yes. Are we, we have, thank you everyone for waiting. We apologize for keeping you in the waiting room. We were an executive session and we opened the meeting, but I do want to state that this is the town of Situate Select Board Meeting on March 23rd. We are commencing our open session at 7:10 in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12, 2020. The Town of Situate Public Meeting shall be meeting remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on Situate Community Television Facebook. And the meeting will be available on Channel 9 and YouTube Situate Community Television after this meeting has concluded. So with that, we will, we do have, we're late for a public hearing that was scheduled at 7:00. So we're going to take our Zoom-ins and town administrators' report after the public hearing to discuss alteration of premise and change of manager for the restaurant All Alcohol License at Salt Society. So Kara, I see you. Sorry to be late.
No worries.
Apologize for that. This is, you were here a lot, well, we discussed last week having the sidewalks utilized this summer. And in order for you to also serve, you need to extend your, your all alcohol license to that. Would you like to just tell us what, how's it going and, and, and why you think this is a good thing?
Um, well, I mean, last summer with COVID, you know, everyone sort of was granted additional exceptions with getting seating outdoors. So I, without getting the opportunity to have the street, I put some tables on the sidewalk and it went very well. There's plenty of space there to do it. So I just don't see any reason why we can't make it just a thing that happens. Like, you know, in the city and whatnot, they have sidewalk seating. So it's only eight tables.
Right. And I'll remind the board that this, where they're located, they have extra wider sidewalks. So it's in compliance with people getting by. And I will anecdotally say everyone loves it. And it does add a vibrancy to our community. So are there any questions from the board? Obviously, we've reviewed your license and talked to you about your stewardship of alcohol license before. So this is simply an extension of where you can actually serve.
Right.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah. Can someone just remind me, does this, how does this impact the restaurant capacity? Is this, is this additional capacity or is this take up capacity of the inside?
Are you talking COVID life or real life?
We can do both.
Real life, right?
I mean, we haven't had capacity since we opened because we opened in the middle of a pandemic. So it's really hard to say. But typically, the outdoor seating doesn't really add to your capacity because they're not inside. But I mean, in terms of right now, you know, we obviously, we're not remotely at capacity. So.
What's the capacity of the restaurant?
Um, 75, I think.
Okay. Jim, do you know, I mean, I.
In real life terms, Tony, if they were able to, to go to capacity in the restaurant, this adds seating to their license. These are additional seats. The difference between Salt Society and The Voyage down in Hammerock, The Voyage is capped on their capacity by their septic system.
Right.
So they can't add additional seating over and above what they're already permitted for. Whereas Kara is on a sewer, so there's no capacity issue with a septic system.
Right.
I mean, typically what I've seen with liquor licenses, it says, you know, it's very specific. They'll say like a 75-seat restaurant with an additional 18-seats outdoors. So it's, that's the way I've seen it usually broken up. Like they, they specify like the outdoor and the indoor.
I think it's great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to run into a problem.
Yeah.
When we get back to normal.
I have spoken to Kara about changing the, adding additional seats or reconfiguring the inside of the restaurant. And she will, would need to go to building, planning, and the fire inspection.
Yep. We have a meeting set up, so.
Okay.
I guess the only other question I had, Madam Chair, is that the tables that are in front of the abutting building, at some point, is that going to be a problem?
I mean, I've been given permission. I had to, you know, mail a letter to the abutters. So I haven't heard any negative feedback. I have a pretty good relationship with the tenant next door. And we're in conversations with, like, if the music is loud, you know, she'll, she'll tell me like if we're open during the day and she's, so we, we have a good dialogue going.
Great.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will ask if any of the participants would like to use the reaction icon on the bottom of your screen to raise hand, or you can simply take your, put your video on and physically raise your hand. If there are any questions or comments from the public on this. I am scrolling through and see none. So I will entertain a motion if someone is inclined.
Move that the Select Board approve the application submitted by owner Kara Tondorf for an alteration of license premise to allow for eight tables for two to four patrons each, extending along the front of the building on the sidewalk. The Board approves the change for the All Kinds of Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License for Salt Society, Inc., 146 Front Street. The premise is one floor and 2,100 square feet with three entrances and exits. Do you want me to move the manager?
Oh.
We need a second on this one.
A second.
Second by Mr. Vignani? Yes, if you'd like to do the second, we can, unless there's an objection.
Unless there's discussion about it?
Is there discussion about the manager? No, okay.
Okay. Move that the Select Board approve of change of manager to Matthew Hoxby.
Second. Move by Ms. Conley, second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we want one vote on both those motions.
Okay, Karen, just if I could add, it's a public hearing, so we need to open it up to the public for any comments. Sorry.
Off my game tonight for sure. I will open it to the participants because if there are any hands raised, would anyone like to comment on the change of manager at Salt Society? I am not seeing any raised hands. So.
One question before we vote. Kara, can you just tell us a little bit about Matt, his experience and liquor training?
Matthew is a wonderful British gentleman who some of you may or may not have met. He was with me at REVA for several years as a server and just, you know, is, is meant for this business. And so I gave him the opportunity to open salt with me. He's been there since day one, since the brainstorming process. And he's, he's a great, great fit. He's, you know, he's got all of his certifications and that's, that's pretty much all I can say.
Great. So he's tip certified and understands the importance of, great. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on change of manager motion? All right, we will have a roll call vote on both motions.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The most, both motions carry 5-0. Thank you so much for coming back with, with that and good luck to you this season.
Thank you very much.
We'll be down.
Good luck.
We'll see ya. Good night.
Good night.
Be fighting for those seats.
Seriously.
Great. If anyone's just joined us, we are a little out of whack because we had to do the public hearing at the time posted. So we are going to go back to the beginning and open up for any walk-ins or Zoom-ins as we now know them. Would anyone like to address the board on a matter that is not on the agenda? If you would like to, you can go to the reactions and do the raise hand function, or you can simply put your video on and we will recognize you. And I going once, going twice? All right. Looks like we do not have any walk-in Zoom-ins, so we will go to Jim Bedrow, our town administrator, for his report.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief because I know we're behind. But as of yesterday, we entered a new phase of the vaccine schedule, or in I guess they call it now Phase 2 Step 3. Residents, you're over. Our residents in certain job categories are now eligible to get vaccinated. The workers include grocery and convenience store workers, restaurant and cafe workers, food pantry workers or volunteers, public works employees, court system workers, and funeral directors and workers at funeral homes. There are other categories for full list. You can go to mass.gov and click on COVID and get all the information you want for that. Interested individuals who want to get in line for a vaccine can go to vaccinesignup.mass.gov, enter all your information. You'll be put in the queue. You will then be notified when a vaccine is available for you. You have 24 hours to respond that you will take that appointment. That is only available for the mass vaccine sites at this point. So Gillette and Fenway Park, to name the two closest to us. The Marshfield Fairground site, CVS sites, the other sites are still posting. As they get vaccine, they will post availability. So you need to keep checking back on those. I've seen a lot of people, I know a lot of the teachers who had a lot of success with CBS. For some reason, we're able to get in line and get their shot. So you need to keep trying. If you're having trouble, 2-on-1 for the state or the Council on Aging will be able to assist you to try to get in. We have a limited number of doses here in Situate. We put those available yesterday. They are sold out. There's about 300 plus of those that we'll be doing Thursday at a clinic. Drew and Joan, who's on the call and the rest of the Board of Health staff, just kept pestering the state and for some reason, the state gave us vaccine. So we are having a clinic. We're getting those people vaccinated. The residents of the Housing Authority got a separate dose of vaccine from what we are doing. And they will be vaccinated in cooperation with the Fire Department, who'll use some of their paramedics at the end of this month. They will get those residents in the Housing Authority vaccinated. So that's a good thing. Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Joan. Thank you to the Board of Health for getting those vaccines for us. The out-of-state travel order is now an out-of-state travel advisory as of yesterday. If you travel out of state, you are advised to quarantine for 10 days when you get back or have a negative PCR test within 72 hours of your return. If you are out of town, out of state for less than 24 hours, if you are in a critical employee, employer relationship and you have to travel, or if you've been fully vaccinated, the travel advisory does not apply to you. Since last Monday, as of yesterday, we had 22 new cases. That was down from 33 the last week. We are still in the yellow. We're at 2.55 for the 14-day positivity. That was up from 2.214. So we seem to be in that zone where we're kind of staying even. We're not really going up. We're not really going down. The state is doing about the same thing. They're at 1.95 up from 1.67 of the previous week. We are now in Phase 4 of the Step 1 of the opening process. I think this is the first time we've been at this stage since last year, this time last year. Out of this phase, fans can return to indoor and outdoor stadiums like Gillette, Fenway, and the TD Garden at 12%, capacity. Public gatherings are limited to 100 indoors and 150 outdoors. Private gatherings remain capped at 10 indoors and 25 outdoors. Exhibition halls, convention centers may be open while adhering to guidelines. And dance floors will be permitted at events like weddings. As I said yesterday, I believe the Macarena, the Electric Slide, and the Hustle are still banned from weddings. You will not be able to do those. And if they're not banned, they should be. We need to, we need to continue to wear our mask. Even if you've been vaccinated, you are still required to wear a mask. We still need to be vigilant. We got to get these numbers down. Hopefully this summer, we'll have a much more open economy and a much more open way to get out and about and do things. Willows Walk is closed. We are looking for an April 1st opening for the golf course. So it is closed for walkers and dog walkers at this point while we get ready for the opening. The clubhouse bids were received. As the board knows, we're short on the clubhouse bid. Plus, we would like to do the parking lot. So we are looking for additional money at town. We need to get going on that. That will cause some disruption this summer, but we are in a really good spot right now in terms of our revenues. Nancy and I are also working and will work with Ian to do a bid for a food truck operation at the golf course so that people will still be able to get something to eat, maybe a drink while they're down there. So we're, we're working on that. We hope to have that out shortly. I actually talked to a food truck operator today who said it would potentially be very attractive to certain vendors. So we need to get it out quickly because they do start booking for the summer. But the clubhouse will be closed if we pass the town meeting article at April. We announced last week and the board is aware, we received a $400,000 complete street grants to finish the sidewalk on Countryway from Huey to Green Bush. We'll start this as soon as we can get it started. The DPW will be coming in to show you the plans. Hopefully at your next meeting, the timing is really going to be determined by the phone company, electric company, National Grid, because we do have some poles to move. Once we identify those poles, we'll get on them. And once those poles are moved, we should be able to start this project. When it's done, you'll be able to walk from North Situate all the way down Countryway, out of the Driftway to the Harbor, and then back up First Parish Road and complete the loop back to North Situate on a sidewalk or a pathway. So I think that's a great thing. And once we get this, the Engineering Department did a really good job. They worked closely with the state to eliminate any problems we had in our last application where we weren't funded. So it does bode well for us receiving funding in the future. And Sean McCarthy in the Engineering Department did a really good job getting this grant, getting it funded. Parkway Project is still going on. You can now see that. It's kind of cool to watch. Cedar Point is still ongoing. We are still asking people to stay out of Cedar Point during the construction. It's very narrow down there. These are pretty wide trenches. So it makes it difficult for traffic to get by, never mind traffic to get by if there are people walking. It's open on the weekend. You can get out there at night, but please during the day, we ask you to stay out of Cedar Point. The senior project is nearing completion. The staff has moved in. The Veterans Agent has moved in. They are all available now by appointment. We are hoping to be ready to open to the public on April 1st when the project is supposed to be substantially done. I know that I've met with the Health Director Drew Shealy to get an idea of what the COVID restrictions would be for the various rooms and what type of activities that they can do. And they're going to get to work scheduling that as soon as possible. Landscaping, they were doing some landscaping today. That's going to be totally weather dependent. But you get a nice idea, if you get a chance, get up there, what that green area is going to look like. And I think it's going to be spectacular when it's done. Like, people are really going to be happy with the way that public common space is going to look when it's finished. Water Department is flushing this week again on 3A towards Norwell on Manlock, Clapp, Grove, and First Parish. With surrounding side streets, the signs are up. So if you live in those neighborhoods, check your water before you do your laundry. If you need to flush your pipes, the best thing to do is to flush on the outside spigots. If you have any problems or questions, you can call the Water Department at 545-8735. And finally, last thing for us is next Monday, we're having our public hearing on the budget with the Advisory Board at 5:30. Karen Canfield read the charter and found out that we're actually supposed to do that. It's required. So we will be having that public hearing next week. As part of that, we will also be just going over, anybody has any questions? We'll go quickly through the Warren Articles and answer any questions that we have for that. Town meeting is currently scheduled for the 12th. At this point, I do not see anything that would preclude us from going forward with town meeting at that time. And that's what I have for time.
I muted myself. Thank you very much, Mr. Bedrow, for that report. And I also just want to quickly, you know, thank you to everybody behind the scenes who was able to, you know, shake those vaccines out of the, out of the grips of the state. And more importantly, for figuring out a plan to prioritize our seniors. That's, it's very much appreciated all around. Any question, I mean, you covered a lot of stuff, but I will leave, open it to the board if they have any questions, Ms. Conley.
Yeah, Jim, I noticed there was an article in The Globe about the money that will be coming to the cities and towns from the federal government. And I went on, the Mass Municipal Association had a spreadsheet out, and it looked like there's some good news there for Situate. I'm wondering, are we pretty confident that that's coming our way?
I'm confident we're going to be getting some money. I don't know how much. Those are estimates at that point by various committees and boards and obviously the MMA and The Globe. But we are confident we'll be getting direct subsidy from the federal government. Really, at this point, I don't have a lot of clarity on as to how we're going to spend it, whether it's going to require an appropriation, whether the board can spend it, whether I'm just going to buy myself a nice big hunkin' truck or something. But we're still looking for a lot of clarity as to how that money's going to come in, how it's going to be spent. And then there's additional money that goes to the county.
Right.
Allegedly on behalf of cities and towns. We don't know how much that is or how the county would make that available or what's going to happen with that. So there's still a lot of uncertainty as to what we're going to get. I know one of the things they do say you can use it for is infrastructure like water and sewer or broadband connection. That's pretty clear that you can, you can do that. So we have projects obviously that we can use it for. But I'm waiting for a little more clarity as to exactly what it's going to be and what we can use it for before I want to start really talking about it publicly.
Well, number's floating out there. So at any rate.
It's out there.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board for Mr. Bedrow? Thank you. Before we go to the next item, David, would you like to tell us something? Yeah. Are you recording? Is that why you're waiting?
Yeah, yeah, that was it. And I'm done. I'm texting Jim and he's answering my questions, so I'm good.
Oh, okay. You have our permission.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. So that concludes the report of the town administrator. We will now jump back to our regularly scheduled programming, which is the 7:10 discussion of the nitrogen loading limitation septic system at 131 Maple Street. We have our Assistant Board of Health Director Joan Schmidt here. We did have this on last week, two weeks ago in our agenda. But unfortunately, we felt that, the board felt that there was not adequate time to review the backup. So if, Joan, if you could just give a, are you, I thought I saw you here.
She is there.
Okay. Joan, would you like to?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yep, Mara. Go dark. Joan, if you'd like to join us. We'd like to, there's a lot of detail in this, and I think there's some folks here. We have Joan?
Do you, yep, Joan, Joan. Joan, are you there?
Well, while she figures out her tech, Jim, do you want to tee us up? You're muted though, Don.
Because I wasn't planning on talking on this at all.
I know. Well, you know, you're good at pitch hitting, so.
So this came up before you last week. It's really an issue where a piece of property cannot be built on because it cannot accommodate a septic system because of the size of the property. So the requirement is that you set aside a piece of property within the water protection district to offset the property that you're going to be using. The Board of Health has to approve this, and the selectmen have to sign off on the paperwork. There is nothing in the regulations that I can find that says the board has to approve it, but the board has to sign the paperwork. Otherwise, the Registry of Deeds won't accept it and won't record it. So it's here before you almost as a mechanical process so that it can get filed. Otherwise, the property can't be built on. The person wants to build the house. Either can't build, I would have to find additional property within the water resource area, Joan. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then try again. So Joan's on her.
You're saving Jim now. The Board of Health has already approved this. Conservation's signed off on it because they asked to.
It doesn't have to go to Conservation Commission. So just let you know, I, you know, I spoke to Marshfield and they've done this several times. So they, it does not have to go to the Conservation Commission. It's going to be put in as conservation land. It's restricted. So that's why they just have to sign off on it. So that it can be sent to the Plymouth D. Records. Nothing can be, nothing can be built on it. They can't have a barn on it. They can't have a pool. They can't do anything with it.
And could the existing prop, will it impact the ability of the house on that property to expand?
No, there's a deed restriction for a three-bedroom house. The Board of Health will put a three-bedroom deed restriction on the house.
Okay. Three-bedroom, okay, is that the current size?
Yes, that's what they have submitted, a three-bedroom. It's new, it's new construction.
Oh, no, I know. But I mean, on the site that, where the Eastman is. Because.
The second property.
The second property where, where they're, they're doing the 20,000 square feet. That site's really not developable anyway, but does that prohibit the house that is on that site from expanding?
The second, there's no, there's no house on the second site. The second site is taking a piece of land that is not otherwise protected and protecting it from further development as a offset to the nitrogen from the first house.
But is that site even developable? Developable? Is that a word?
Buildable? From what I've spoke to Joan, it's not within the wetland.
No, you can't, you can't build on this. It's 12,000 square feet. That's what they needed for 131 Maple. So you, and it butts the wetlands.
All right. Does anyone want to ask the question that's popping out of my head?
Could they, could they build on the second site? Is it a buildable piece of land if it was bigger?
It's 12,000 square feet. So.
So no. So they can't build on that land?
No, and it goes into a conservation.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
So if they can't build on that land, how is it ever saving any nitrogen input into our system?
Greg, we'll get to you.
It's some math.
Yeah, so.
Calculation, Tony, of how much land.
Yeah, you should ask Greg. You should ask Greg more, more specifics on it.
Greg's the guy that's developing the project, so.
I know, but he's the, he's the engineer that actually developed the system. And he's the engineer that needed to go find this land for the septic system. So he would be able to answer this question better than I could for you. But 12,000 square feet cannot, it can't be, it's going into conservation restriction because they need that land for the, for the 131 Maple.
No, I completely understand that. I, I have some problems with the logic of the whole program. You know, if we can't ever build a house on there by putting a restriction against it in the future, putting nitrogen in our system, it makes no sense to me. Because it can't put any more nitrogen in the system, period. It's near the wetlands and it can't be built on.
Would, would the board agree?
But we don't know that. I mean, we, we really don't know that. We know this is 12,000 square feet. That's a butt, that is butts up against the conservation land.
And nothing to make any benefit of being combined with other property, Tony, being part of something that could be built. But this is the first one we've done. I've never done one of these in 20 million years I've been doing this, 20.
Right.
Would anyone have an objection if we invited Mr. Morrison to this as the engineer on the, on the project to answer some of these questions directly? Or does the board want to mull this?
Oh, fine.
Okay. Mr. Morris? I've asked you, let's see. Hi, Greg.
Good evening.
Yeah, can you, I could see you shaking your head. So tell us where we've gone astray here.
Sure. For the record, Gregory Morris, I'm a registered engineer working on the project. The property that we're talking about, 131 Maple Street, is a buildable lot, whether this restriction is granted or not. It's a lot that has grandfathering protections. It's 18,000 square feet in size and is absolutely a buildable lot today. The, the reason why we're here though is because that property on Maple Street is within the Zone 2, which is a, it's a restricted area with respect to the town wells, where there's a limitation on the amount of nitrogen that a septic system can discharge. Typically, the DE, well, the DEP standard is that you're allowed to discharge 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet of lot size. So that's equivalent essentially of one bedroom per 10,000 square feet. This lot, being 18,000 square feet in size, can accommodate, you know, 1.8 bedrooms. The proposal though is to construct a three-bedroom house. And so for a three-bedroom house, that would require 30,000 square feet. DEP has set up this nitrogen credit land, which I have applied for in Marshfield. I've also applied for it in Mata Poisette on several occasions, that you can find credit land that is in proximity to the same town well and in the same location of town to make up the difference so that you can achieve that larger bedroom count. So we've identified the property on Grove Street as being in the same Zone 2 and being in the same well protection zone. I had spoken to this originally with Jennifer Keefe when she was our Board of Health agent, and we involved the DEP in selecting this land. This is going back probably three years ago. But it was never, the paperwork was never executed. And now it's, now it's coming forth before the board. The land that's on Grove Street that's being proposed to be restricted is a buildable lot. And by restricting this land, it restricts the amount of building or the amount of bedrooms. And by restricting this land, it restricts the amount of building or the amount of bedrooms that can be built on that lot on Grove Street. So both properties will have a deed restriction in perpetuity, limiting the amount of bedroom in the buildability of both of the lots.
Yep. So I, I understood all that. I read that in the material. It still doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we're giving a house the ability to put more nitrogen into our system on the premise that somebody may build a house sometime in the future on some other piece of property that's near a wetland that may, that, that will then restrict the nitrogen on that property 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 375 years from now.
So that land on Grove Street that we are restricting, that has a valid septic design permit. It has a valid common driveway. The owner of that property is intending to break ground on a house on that property in the immediate future. The property was just sold to a builder. Um, all of their permits are in place. They could pull a building permit tomorrow on that lot. It is proposed to be built imminently. That lot on Grove Street, you know, has the potential for probably as many as six bedrooms on it. And you look at the property that we're here for, the one on Maple Street, having the ability for, you know, one bedroom, you're talking seven bedrooms in total. What we're doing is we're saying we'll restrict the two properties so that rather than having six bedrooms on Grove and one on Maple, we'll have three on Grove and, and three on Maple. It's the same number of bedrooms in the zone two. It's the same amount of nitrogen. There are building, building plans for, for the credit property.
Yeah. If somebody happens to build on that land sometime in the future. Otherwise, we have two more bedrooms putting nitrogen into an area that it's not supposed to. And we may never use that credit. It's not like the other property is ready to build and we're reducing them from six to three. It's, it's all hypothetical. And I'm not, I don't care about the house, you know, I'm not, this isn't, this particular situation, the whole, the whole plan doesn't make sense to me. What if nobody ever builds on that land on Maple Street?
Then there'd be even less nitrogen going into the system. The, the plans are in place and the permits are in place for someone to go build on Maple Street tomorrow.
So Tony, I had the same head scratching. It just like, it really, because we've never done it in this town and it makes, it's, it seems ridiculous. Unfortunately, I think it's the, 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 you know, as Joan said, they, the, the precedence is there, the, the rules are there and, um, that this is meets those criteria, unfortunately. How close, physically close are these two properties? I, I'm sorry, I didn't look that up. Greg, are they?
Let's say they're within half a mile of each other.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty close.
Okay.
And we, and we did check with DEP. I did check with them to make sure that this piece of this property, they, I sent them all the information and made sure that that piece of property would meet, would meet the nitrogen credits and it does.
So I read somewhere in there that it has to be downstream and adjacent to.
I asked them about that and they said it does not.
But it's in the, it's in the law?
I specifically asked them that when I called them because I said, this is not downstream. It's not adjacent. And they said it doesn't have to be.
So there are no current plans to build on the property on Grove Street?
There are. Those plans are all in place.
So there are actually two separate pieces of property we're talking about, both of which now have plans to build a three bedroom house.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Well, because the, the reason I'm asking is because I think to the point where if the property on Grove Street wasn't, didn't have current plans to build on it, you could see a scenario where somebody would decide they want to build a four bedroom house on that. And then they go scouring around town, around that area to find yet another credit. And this could just sort of keep going. So.
So, but the question is, we are, as I think Jim teed up, we are to sign off on the Board of Health approval, which is a weird thing. I don't know, Toni, you can wrap, help me wrap my head around just that piece like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that this, these guys are kind of the guinea pig for this, but we've just never done this before. And it's just as, it's a strange thing. I, so Greg, just, if you can just clarify what you just told Karen, there's actually plans to build on both properties.
Yes, so.
So we didn't even get a picture of property number two. We didn't get any plans for property number two. So I, I've just, I've just, so we're, we're really trying to decipher all this stuff from.
Right. What was presented to us was, was basically it looked like a landlocked piece of property that was going to be, um, it offered in this, this exchange. I don't know what the right word is. And, and, and now you're saying that it is developable. They just haven't put in permits or has, they haven't applied for the construction of that. But it is developable. And Joan, you said it was, right?
So they do have, they did submit a septic plan already for the, the property at Grove Street.
Okay.
If, so if we didn't do that.
Enough land and they have enough nitrogen credits for that particular septic system that they submitted to that property.
If, if, if we didn't do this, could that Grove Street property build a four bedroom house? Is it big enough?
Yes.
So it could, so, so, so this is, so what this would do would force it to be a three where you're, you're living, I got it. Okay. So it could be, it could be a four. I got it.
Yeah. So they're just moving bedrooms around as Greg said. Okay. Any other?
Joan, do we actually have a, a community plan?
We have, excuse me, do we have a?
Do we actually have the community plan that it says that you have to have in the, in the law to do this stuff? Doesn't it say that, and again, I.
It's a title five. It's a title five law for the Board of Health when they're.
No, but it said you have to have either facility plan or a community plan, I thought. And do we? To, to use this credit, I think. I mean, there's a lot to read.
I think it said if it applies is what I read. I don't know. Has anybody?
If it applies.
There were two types of nitrogen credits. You can apply as an individual facility, which would be like this application, which is just an individual lot. Or you could apply with a community plan, which is something like the town might do if they were in a, in a well zone that had smaller zoning in place. You typically don't see this application because most of the wells in town are located in the West End, which for the most part has one acre zoning. So almost all new buildable lots on the West End can accommodate up to four bedrooms. This is a rare exception in the West End where it's a grandfathered lot of smaller than 40,000. That's why you see it in this scenario. But you don't have a community plan in place. You really don't need one.
So if I understand this, we have to, the Board of Selectmen has to sign it so that the conservation restriction can be added to the deed or deeds at the registry. Is that right?
Correct. So the, so the registry won't.
Won't recall it.
Unless everybody signs it.
Right.
To put it in, it's, you may have a conservation restriction on that piece of property.
Uh, we have been joined by Conservation Member Penny Hypes. Uh, would you like to contribute to this conversation before we move on?
Um, I don't know what you're talking about, to be honest. I, I just got on.
Oh, okay. We won't call you out then. We're talking about a nitrogen swap and we're, we're just learning about it too. So never mind. Thank you for joining us, Penn.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Okay, does the board, uh, Mr. Goodrich, did you?
Uh, I mean, I know this is new. I know this is, this is different and it's, it's odd. I, I guess Joan, I, I trust, I trust the Board of Health. DEP has taken a look at this. I mean, my position, I know it's, it seems a bit strange, but if we are limiting, you know, I'm going to put my faith with our Board of Health here.
Okay.
And we will put deed restrictions on the home, homes. So.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be able to add any more bedrooms.
Who, um, who actually pays for the conservation restriction? Is that the owner? Uh, how's that?
The owner, the owner files it. And then once it gets filed, um, we won't issue a septic permit until it gets filed with the Plymouth Registry. So once we see that it's been filed, then we can issue the, that's how it works.
We have to find someone to hold the restriction.
Excuse me?
Do, do we as a town have to find an entity to hold the restriction?
As we do with other conservation.
As we do with other conservation land?
We keep a copy in the file.
I think, I think it might be different because it's on the deed. Is that, I don't know the answer.
It's a deed restriction.
Yeah, so.
Restriction, it's a deed. I just want to, it does cost the town money to get conservation, to get outside entities to hold conservation restrictions. But if it's a restriction on the deed and we don't need to do that, then it won't cost us anything.
Correct. Or well, the deed, the, when they record it, that'll be an owner's expense.
Right. And I'm just saying, it won't cost the town anything.
No.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
To owner's expense.
Okay.
Um. All right. Yes, Tony?
Yeah, just, I, I, let me make it clear. I'm not questioning the Board of Health's ability or not having faith in them. This is just the first time we've ever done this.
Right, I know.
And I don't want to open up a can of worms that we set a precedent doing something that all of a sudden becomes, as somebody alluded to, all of a sudden people are buying little pieces of land out in, you know, blocked in area that you can't develop to, to get a credit to build a bigger house where they're really not supposed to. So that's my fear. And I just am not an expert at this and I'm just reading it all and I'm just a little confused. I see Frank's on there. I don't know if, if he has anything to add on this and if, uh, if Concom had some sort of an opinion on this. And I, I'm probably, you know, Greg says that, uh, that Marshfield does this all the time. I'm hoping that the first one that they did, they kind of vetted out and had the same questions we are, but sorry to belabor the conversation.
Yeah, so, uh, we do, no, To- Tony, you're absolutely right. I mean, these are all the questions we had. This is why we postponed it. We've never done it. Um, and we want to make sure we get it right so that we don't set the precedent. So, uh, we do have our Chair of our Conservation and our Conservation Agent. So, um, oops, which I just muted by accident. Sorry, Amy. So would you guys, either of you like to, um, add any comments on this, uh, this topic? Um, I'll start with Amy or as our agent and then Frank, if you'd like to jump in.
Yeah. So, I mean, in, in all the years I've been working in municipal government, um, I've never seen this either. So it's definitely, um, not in my wheelhouse of expertise. So I don't think it's very common. Definitely not in Situate or, um, Hanover where I used to work. So, um, I, I don't know. And I, I'm not sure that you have to vote for it. I, I might, I might reach out to, to counsel and get an opinion on it, um, if you're uncomfortable with it. But then again, as, as Joan says, I mean, it's, if, if it's allowed by statute, then maybe it's just as simple as that.
Frank?
Uh, so Amy and I have been discussing this a little bit and, uh, my apologies to Greg. He and I had hoped to catch up before this meeting so that he could enlighten me a little bit more on, on how this works. I, I get the concept and I understand the ratios and things like that. I think Karen made a good point about the conservation restriction. Recently, the Conservation Commission decided to hold the conservation restriction on the, um, Curtis Farms Estate. And we received some monetary compensation to hold that as well as some additional land. And, um, we're paying const, the Wildlands Trust to hold the conservation restrictions on land that we've acquired with CPC money. So that concerns me a little bit. I, I realize this is a fairly small area. It goes on the deed. It, it shouldn't be a big deal, but a conservation restriction needs to be monitored in some way. And it's typically done by a third party to make sure that what you've done is upheld. So I, I'm, I'm not quite sure that maybe a little bit of follow up on that shouldn't take place. Amy and I looked at, Amy was good enough to forward me the, the rules and regulations. I, I have to be honest, I did a real cursory check. And there's a few things that I questioned, but um, also knowing that Jen Keefe, our former agent, worked on that. Jen was a pretty thorough person. So I, I, I'm not questioning Joan or the Board of Health. I just, to be quite honest, haven't had the opportunity to look at a few of the additional items. I know it's been hanging out there a long time, but I, I do think it's something that if we decide to do this, it will undoubtedly be used more in the future and it's important to get it right.
Right. So there has been some talk about this has been hanging out a long time. It was brought to the board's attention only two weeks ago. And so this is, um, the second opportunity we've had to even have this conversation. So, um, I feel bad for the folks waiting to have their house built. And I'm sorry, Greg, I know how much work you guys have put into it. But, um, I think it's pretty clear that the, um, you know, I think we're, we're close to answering all of the questions. I appreciate what you've brought in. But I, I get the sense from, from all of these comments that we might need to chew on this for another two weeks. And I know you don't want to hear that, but, um, unless somebody on the board feels differently, do you think that we should look at clarifying on the deed restriction and clarifying that we are just approving the Board of Health recommendation on this? I think those are the two open things. Andrew, you have another thought? Or no, Karen? Oh, Karen, you're muted. Sorry.
Um, yeah, my question is, and I don't want to upset anyone, however, what if we don't do this? What happens?
I don't know if anyone has the answer to that.
I think you would have houses on both properties. Right, Mark? Or Greg?
Yes, both properties are buildable as it is.
So you would have a two bedroom house on one property and a four bedroom house on the other? I just want to, and can we be sued by anyone if we decide we don't want to sign this?
I don't know the answer to that.
We can always be sued. You don't need to reason to sue the town.
All right. But I would think honestly, I, my, my non-lawyer point on that is if indeed this is all statutory and we may not like it, but it's, it's kosher. I think that we would be opening ourselves to that. So I think we just, um, need to get comfortable with that. Um, unless somebody feels differently, wants to make a motion.
The only other question I have is, it says that the Board of, uh, Conservation has to sign on this too.
Yeah, that was my question.
But so, is, does Concom? I mean, they haven't even reviewed it yet and told us what they think. So are you guys gonna just?
We've looked at it, Tony.
Yeah.
Oh, so are you guys, are you guys gonna sign off on it?
Well, and if, if you vote it, I'll internally sign off that I acknowledge what it's going on, but it doesn't require a vote from the Conservation Commission to make this happen. So in, in the, in the CR, if, if you need that or they, the applicant needs it to go to E O E A to get approval for the CR to get recorded.
Right.
To make the whole deal happen. As far as if you don't vote for it, I mean, I think it's important to see, to maybe look at the plan for Grove Street. Sure, you can see what is permitted for that Grove Street property. They've come in with a common driveway and, um, they're squeezing in a house there and that did go through Conservation Commission. And then there's this other lot that they've bought from the neighbor. And that's where the nitrogen credit's going. But I mean, and then on the Maple one, that's, that's sat idle, you know, for quite a long time, at least since I've been here. And so I guess Greg's saying that's a three bedroom. Is that what it is, Joan? But, um, I mean, so that, that one sat, and I think that's waiting for this nitrogen credit to go through so that they can put a system to, uh, build on that lot.
Does the same person own both properties?
Yes, to my knowledge.
Greg, is that accurate?
Yes.
And they're going to build on both?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well.
Does the board want to put this, um, on the next agenda early and, and get those questions answered? Or would somebody like to make a motion?
Aaron?
Yes. Yes, Frank?
If, uh, and I know that Greg's been holding on this for a long time, and that I'd like to move it along. But if we made a commitment to catch up with him, I just satisfy a few questions from the Conservation side regarding the, the, um, how the seismant is held, um, that kind of thing. Uh, maybe even Greg, Joan and I could, could get together. I, I, my understanding is it really has very little to do with the Commission, other than we have to sign off. But I, I'd certainly feel better if I wrap my head around the whole thing.
I, I honestly think that's prudent, because it is new and to all the points we've made. We were meeting, we are reconvening on, um, April 6th is our next meeting. Um, and if you guys can meet be- between then, and, um, Jim, if we could address some of our, the rest of the Board's questions between now and then, we will put you on early and not have this lengthy conversation. Is that, is that acceptable to the Board and to everyone on this?
Can we just get the plans for the second property and a picture of that lot also, for the one that's getting the credit?
I can get that for it, I have it.
Okay. Yeah, so, sorry for delaying, it seems like it's, it seems like it's gonna happen, but I just, um, I'm just learning it as we go along.
Okay, well, we are, we are, uh, we, we do, we do take instruction, so let's get this right. Um, alright, so, I think that concludes this, um, part of our agenda, and we will see you in two weeks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Um, I have been informed by our Town Administrator that our next, um, item to discuss is the collective bargaining agreement is not ready for prime time, as the, uh, Union has not voted on that matter, so that we can, we're gonna skip right over and get so close to being back on schedule. Um, and that'll bring us to our 7:30 discussion on sewer rules and regs inspections. Uh, Will Branton and Robert Rafferty from Principal Environmental are, are right, are there on the bottom of my screen. Um, and I will turn it over to you to, uh, walk us through this, if you would, Mr. Branton.
Oh, yeah, thank you for having me, William Branton, Supervisor for the Town Sewer Department. Um, we're here to review some of our existing rules and regulations regarding inspections at time of sale or transfer for properties. Uh, we've learned a number of lessons, uh, during and throughout the Cedar Point Sewer Replacement Project, uh, that we'll go over in just a moment. Uh, but there's a couple of regulations we're seeking clarity on, which is, on that time of sale or transfer, properties are to undergo a sewer inspection. Um, and there's been some ambiguity about how those rules should be carried out. Uh, so we've reviewed them and made a couple of proposals for how to tweak them for clarity's sake. Uh, and I just want to present our findings to you, and I'll, I'll pass it over to, uh, Rob Britt from Environmental Partners.
Thanks, Will, um, I do have a, a short PowerPoint, I'm gonna try to share my screen. And, uh, hopefully that works for everybody. Um, we're here to talk, as Will said, about these modifications to the sewer rules and regs, um, primarily related to the private sewer connections. In, in Situate, as in most other communities, the private property owner owns the sewer connection from their house to the property line. Uh, they're responsible for maintaining that, that sewer line. Problem is that we're seeing out at Cedar Point, there are a lot of sewer connections on private property that are in pretty tough shape. Uh, most of these were built over 50 years ago, or installed over 50 years ago, made out of cast iron or clay pipe, and they've deteriorated, or have holes, cracks, fractures, that sort of thing. Um, just for, sort of off the cuff, you know, ballpark, a single six-inch pipe of this, this type um, could let in as much as 100, over 100,000 gallons a day of clean water into your sewer system, which takes the place of what's supposed to be there. And one of the reasons that happens is that you, you've seen what happens out at Cedar Point in particular, um, that we've decided that what needs to happen is the town needs to have some, uh, beefed up construction standards, okay? So, one of the modifications to the sewer rules and regs is to, um, not only, uh, site sewers in flood-prone areas, but also look at tightly influenced areas wherever the sewer is below the high-tide line. Uh, we propose that you have to some, uh, stepped up, upgraded, uh, construction techniques. And this primarily is to, to do this pipe wrap, and I'll show you a picture of that. So, this is what's happening out at Cedar Point, um, all-new PVC pipe is going in, replace the old corroded deteriorating lines, and we're wrapping the exterior of every joint in that pipe with this tape to keep the water from coming in. So, this, you know, is a, something that's not typically done, but, uh, given the flooding out there and the condition of sewer laterals, it, it seems to make sense to do this, we're also doing this with the main sewer line, by the way. And so, Will said, there's discussion about a time of transfer inspection program. Um, these are pretty common throughout the country, especially, um, in Massachusetts, there's done with septic systems, um, Fire Department does smoke and carbon dioxide detectors. You have a, in your existing regulations, um, the, this says that you may inspect a property for illicit sewer connections at a time of transfer, so it's already in there. Um, we're proposing to have the building sewer connections evaluated. And of course, the devil's always in the detail, uh, so in addition to construction, uh, standards, we're looking at a requirement to inspect the sewer line with an, and a pipeline camera, um, to look for things like cracks and fractures, holes in a pipe, uh, roots, which are indicating, uh, water coming into the system already. But the trick is to, what happens after that? What kind of burden does that put on your sewer department to make a decision about whether the sewer pipe has to be replaced or not? Well, to lighten the load a little bit, we're saying that any pipe that's made of these materials, not PVC, is probably 40 to 50 years old. And these are the pipes that we see that are having problems, so only the pe- people have those pipes who'll, uh, have to have their, their pipeline inspected. Um, for the sewer department to make a decision about whether that pipe has to be replaced or repaired, um, we're proposing a, a program that, uh, looks at a sort of a weighted criteria, uh, so that everybody knows exactly, you know, if you have a hole in the pipe and a fracture and so forth, we'll add that all up and say, okay, yeah, your pipe is bad enough that it needs to be replaced. One of the issues we're, we're seeing is that most of the, the people, the plumbers and, and the contractors who will be inspecting these pipelines, um, don't have the equipment to give you a very good video of what they're seeing. So, we have to rely on them to, to manually record what they're, what they're seeing and submitting that to the sewer department for evaluation. And that's pretty much the short story, I'll unshare my screen, um, unless you want to look at- for a while. I think there should be some-
Great, thank you, that was very concise, um, and thank you for, to the sewer department for, you know, looking for ways that we can really address some of the I and I, I mean, Cedar Point taught us anything. It's a really big problem, um, I'm sure Will can go into much more detail about that. But, um, I'm sure the Board has some questions, but my first initial question is, if, if, if you're doing, is there a general sense of what it would cost for an owner to do the inspection? Should they have to, do we even have a ballpark of what we'll be asking folks to do?
And, based on some discussions with, with some local companies, uh, what would be anticipated for a price would probably be between $300 and $700 for a, a full thorough inspection.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Did you say 300 or?
Three to seven.
Dollars if, if doing a full video inspection.
Sorry, I didn't catch that zero, okay. Uh, does the Board have, um, uh, questions open up to? Any more, Ms. Mark?
Yes, no, thank you, um, I'm curious, um, you said that most of these inspectors don't have the cameras that are necessary to do the inspections properly, Will? Will the town be providing the appropriate equipment?
Uh, at, at this time, the town doesn't really have, uh, the staff or a fee structure for providing that equipment. Uh, that's something we could look into further, uh, but for now, we're looking for them to, to use, uh, private resources or a private company.
Yeah, I should add-
Did I misunderstand what you said, Bob? Sorry, it was-
Yeah, what I, what I should say is that, um, plumbers have cameras that they can see what, what's in the pipe, but they generally can't record and a quality that's needed for someone else to review it, that, once you have the recording capability to, the price of the equipment goes way up.
Okay, and that's what drives the, the cost of a better inspection, got it?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have one more question, um, are we aware, since you've uncovered this, Will, you know, as Karen had said specifically with the Cedar Point project, any current construction going on today that we're applying this standard to mitigate future problems along these areas?
Uh, not, not major construction, but, uh, a, a good portion of these rules are currently existing in the rules and regulations. Um, what we're seeking to add is some clarity on, uh, basically the beneficial reuse of, of lines. Uh, we, we've encountered some arguments of, well, this line is still in good shape, uh, despite being made out of material X. Uh, and this would allow a formative review process to verify if in fact the line is still in good shape or not.
Okay, great. So, it's a great idea, so thank you for taking it on.
Yeah, Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, no, I, I, I love it, I, I love, um, the, the philosophy behind it, what we've learned. Is there, now, what's, what's typically a, a shelf life for one of these? And I'm only thinking about if there's a, you know, a sale of a new construction house versus, I mean, are these typically 30, 40-year pipes, or is it really the material that matters, or what, you know, if, if we had a kind of focus on areas, is it time or material, I guess? For failure?
Can, can very much be dependent on, on conditions. Um, materials like cast iron are subject to chemical attack, so over time, they will break down just from regular use. Um, the clay lines are, are less subject to chemical attack, uh, but they, they, if, if disturbed by vibrations or crushing force, uh, can cause a lot of cracks. Um, and what we see in Situate is a lot of root infiltration into clay lines. Uh, typically, once the roots develop, uh, into the clay line, uh, it's only a matter of time, if once removed, until it, you know, regrows back into the sewer line. And these can prevent, or these can cause blockages for the residents as well, um, to have the dual benefit of not only preventing inflows and infiltration, uh, but also preventing, uh, unanticipated blockages for new residents and, and new homeowners.
I'm, I'm sorry, so, I understand that the roots are always, I guess, gonna be a problem. Is there like a gold standard kind of line, is it always now PVC, that's what everyone's gonna use now? Or is it a re-changing, I'm only thinking if we'd have to require folks to use a specific material, or should we say it's this type of PVC or whatever we use?
Oh, yeah, yeah, PVC is the, is the current, uh, standard, uh, it is the standard in our rules and regulations. Uh, under the existing rules, um, it, they kind of have to get up to code, which is just basically a PVC, is it PVC or is it not PVC? Given that our, our standards require either PVC or HDPE for a force connection, but they're both, they're basically both, uh, types of plastic.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Karen, I mean, Ms. Connolly and then Mr. Vannani?
Um, so, is this more or less, or the same type of burden that a homeowner has who has to get a Title V inspection for a sew- a septic system?
Uh, very, very happy to report that it's much less involved than a Title V inspection. Uh, the inspection's typically more brief, um, and should, should the line be in a state of failure, need to be replaced, uh, homeowners can anticipate a cost range of between, you know, $3,000 to $7,000 or so for a new sewer line, um, which is usually substantially much less than, than work that might immediately be done to replace a septic system.
Right. Okay, good, thank you.
That was, uh, um, my question as well, Karen, thanks, um, I wanted to ask also, what did I want to ask? Um, what's the cost to replace it? So, they find a, a, a bad pipe, what is a homeowner gonna have to pay approximately to get that connector pipe replaced? Any idea, is it $1,000, is it $5,000, is it?
It's, it's gonna depend on the distance or setback of the property from the main sewer line in the street. Uh, in most cases, we're finding the range to be between $3,000 and $7,000. Um, but these are services provided by, uh, private drain layers in town, so prices may vary.
Well, you making this up, because the other one was $300 to $700, now this one's $3,000 to $7,000. Finding a common, um, so my other question is, do we have to have everyone inspect their houses? Like, if someone's selling a brand-new house and it's made of PVC, do they have to do the inspection also?
They should.
Uh, that's not in the standards before you today. Um, it could be argued that we might want to just do, uh, based on a certain number of years, um, like 25 to 30 years to incur one of these inspections. Uh, but given that PVC is our, our current standard, um, it's, it's not been required in, in the, in the standards before you.
So, somebody goes to sell their house, it's 25 years old, how do they prove to you that they have a PVC pipe and not a clay pipe?
Uh, we, we have record of all sewer inspection connections, uh, so we would, we would recover the as-built drawing for the, the property and interview with the homeowner or the applicant.
Okay, so the rules are gonna say, or the guidelines you're gonna follow are, if it's PVC, you're not gonna have to check it?
Uh, not gonna do it, incur this, this extra evaluation, yep. Uh, so they, they may still have a standard, uh, their Realtor may still have standard, uh, inspections that they may want to perform, uh, or the purchaser may want to request an inspection of this type. Um, but as, as far as a, a complete evaluation of their sewer line, um, with these standards would, would not be required.
Right, I think you answered my question, so, if it's PVC, you don't have to inspect these. Um, so we're not gonna do it for all houses, so houses are gonna, someone's gonna want to sell their house, they're gonna have to come to sewer, their sewer's gonna look at their hookup and see what the material is, and if it's, uh, not PVC, then they're gonna have to spend the $300 to $700 to get it inspected, send that tape to the sewer department. The sewer department's gonna look at it and evaluate it, and they're gonna come back to them with a answer that says you have to spend $3,000 to $7,000 to replace that pipe or not.
Yep, that's-
It's the process in a nutshell?
Yep.
So, it's not gonna add a lot of work to you guys?
Um, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, expand the department, but I, I think it's within our, our ability, uh, to, to review these documents. We're, we're regularly contacted by Realtors, um, at time of sale or transfer for properties anyway, uh, and this would just be another box that we could check, uh, as part of that process.
So, it, it's gonna be, it is a requirement for all sales of property to come to the sewer department. You gotta get that box checked off before you can sell your house.
Uh, correct, this, this will make it a formal requirement.
Right, and we don't, and what's the expected turnaround time? We don't want the sale of a house to be postponed for weeks. Is it, is it a day, a week?
Uh, in, in most cases, when Realtors contact our department with this question, uh, we, we respond within a 24-hour period. Uh, if not, if, you know, if we pick up the phone when they call, it, it's usually right away. Uh, we, we've made strides in modernizing our system and record-keeping with our GIS system, uh, which allows for very, uh, quick checking of these records.
Awesome, but everybody's not coming to you now. Right? Every sale of every property isn't coming to you to get your sign off, or are they, that's a question, sorry.
That, that, uh, we will be looking into, um, it's only properties connected to town sewer that the sewer department would be interested in.
Good point. Okay. So, we'll have to think of some sort of time period before, you know, that we would, I, I like it, I think it's great, it's just like Title V, like Karen said. Um, and it's, probably has a larger impact on the town residents than a, a bad Title V, uh, um, you know, system. Uh, but we'll have to phase it in, have you thought about when, you know, we have to inform everybody, let everybody know, and then say it's effective as of a certain date? Any thought into that?
Uh, that, that's where we, we'd be open to suggestions there, uh, the current rules and regulations require, uh, that they, that they undergo these inspections already and, and bring their line up to our standards. Uh, these modifications would allow the department some flexibility- These modifications would allow the department some flexibility in reviewing the, the line as opposed to, prior, we, we did not have the ability to, to review.
So Tony, bring up a really good point. That was one thing I, I wanted to ask the board. Do you think there should be in the regulations? Should we put in a requirement of how fast that turnaround is? Because I imagine that that will be a concern of the realtors and folks selling their homes, that they have an assurance that they're not in limbo for weeks? Karen?
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of other conditions that people, when they're selling their houses or buying houses, have to wait for the inspector for this thing, wait for the inspector for that thing, wait for the title. I don't know why we would put some sort of onus on the sewer department that isn't on all of these other various pieces that need to be put together when you're selling a house. And I personally think that I would be surprised if banks wouldn't be happier or if they don't require people to have their sewer connection inspected to make sure they're not on a failing system. And I mean, I think that most of the recent septic systems use PVC pipe, but you still have to get a Title V inspection and strange things happen and you flunk. Even, so I just feel like I wouldn't put that onus on the sewer department to have to be, you know, guaranteed turnaround and whatever amount of days, just my opinion.
Well, I agree with you. I just wanted to put it out there because I know that'll be concerned. And then the, the important question that Tony raised is, you know, the rollout communication and just timing of this. We really need to be mindful that we do it in a way that doesn't surprise folks. They know it's coming. I mean, right now is not a bad time to institute this policy because there's very little mark on the market and the market's insane. So, you know, I don't think it will harm transfers at this particular point. But I think we need to give some time for people to, to, to be aware that it's happening. I think a lot of realtors know it's coming because I know Will's been working with them. But, or it's going to be proposed to be coming. So what do you think, guys, as far as, you know, should we? You know, today's March twenty-third. I think the pieces are all in order. You guys did a great job with the red line and presenting it to us. How long do you think we need to prepare the community and do the outreach? Three months? Six months? Any thoughts?
What, before it's effective?
Yeah.
Well, Will, are you working with realtors already?
Uh, yes, uh, the, under the current rules and regulations, it, it's a bit less broad. It allows less room for interpretation and less room for review. So, so these standards will give us the ability to, to review on a case-by-case basis as opposed to just what material is it made out of? So my thoughts is that this, this review process would alleviate some of the concerns and questions that, that we've run into with, with realtors in town.
So you'd rather see it go into effect sooner rather than later?
Uh, yes, yep.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought.
Okay. Um, all right, well, is there, are there any further questions about this from the board? I do want to give an opportunity to any participant that want to address this. This is, you know, it is adding something to the list, so if we were to go forward. Any other, no board members? Okay. Is there any, are there any participants that would like to contribute to this conversation? You can use your reaction to raise hands or just take your video off. And I'm not seeing any, okay. Then would, does the motion have timing in it? I don't think it does.
It does, it does. It has a suggest, we need to fix the dates, but it's fill in the blanks.
Does April fifteenth work or May first?
What? Well, it, it, it's asking us to notify residents and real estate agents. I would think you'd want to notify them sooner and then make the effective date later. So if you had an effective date of, of June fifteenth and you had a notification date of April fifteenth, you would think that would give everyone enough time, including Will, to get the word out and then for people to adjust whatever plans they've got. Unless you don't want to have that much time between effective and notification and people start trying to rush things through. Just my observation there.
Yeah, well.
Will, for, for notification, can you put something in the soar bills for people?
Uh, I, I would think that's certainly an option for us, yep.
And when's the next set of soar bills that go out?
I'm going to, I'm going to toss that one to Nancy. We actually do our billing through the water department on a quarterly basis. I'm not aware.
I just paid my water bill, so I think you've got a couple more months.
Right, the next set that'll go out will be Section C, third quarter. So effective in April, you'll be doing your fourth quarter bill, all three sections and water and sewer combined. So you'll be hitting everybody, not just your sewer accounts.
But can we put orders to the bills?
You can put a buck split in.
Yeah, so to all soar, you know, soil connection, you put it in there. It goes out in April with the bills, so you make the effective date after the bills go out sometime in May, I would think.
I'm, I like that. I'm comfortable with that because I think it's, the community should be aware. And if you are on sewer, you should know that if you're thinking of selling your house, this is a new thing. So are you comfortable with that, Will, that timing?
That sounds great.
Okay, would somebody like to adjust the, like, can make a motion with the adjust, with adjusted dates and instruction?
Move to, move to approve the revised sewer inspection policy by notifying residents and real estate agents by April fifteenth. And the policy would be effective June fifteenth, May fifteenth?
May.
May? Effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Sorry, Karen, they said, they said it would go out in the April bills and May.
Oh, I thought they said the bills were going on in April fifteenth. Did I misunderstand? I'm sorry.
The bills will go out, there'll be a third that'll go out in April, a third that'll go out in May and a third that'll go out in June. So it's quarterly sections.
Oh, so we don't all get our water bills on the same, okay, got it. So it seems to me as though if we're going to, we'd, we'd have to push the date of the effectiveness off at least until July first.
July first.
Okay. So.
Well, is that extremely problematic or we'll just get it done? I think it.
Uh, we.
You can live with that?
We're happy to keep working.
All right, Ms. Connolly, would you like to?
Yes, I, I would like to amend this, amend this motion. Move to approve the revised sewer inspection policy and notify residents and real estate agents before June fifteenth with an effective date of July fifteenth.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I missed a good ridge. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none.
I'm sorry, how are we going to notify the real estate agents? I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think we have to have that necessarily in the motion, right?
No, we will, we can.
So we'll just take out real estate agents and Will can, can use his PR skills to get in touch with those lovely people in the real estate business.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep it in the motion, it's just that we don't have to figure it out.
Right.
We will figure it out before it's time to do it.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion of a second, note for, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
This can field.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Good, all right, thank you very much. Carries five zero. And I miss, okay. Thank you both of you for that presentation as always, as thorough and helpful as it could possibly be, so thank you.
Can you just tell me who seconded that? I'm sorry.
You're good, Rich. Okay, great, so go forth and, and plug the leaks and we will talk to you after this meeting about how to talk to our realtors. All right, so I'm so glad that my last item on this agenda is talking about timing of this meeting. So we are now up to our seven fifty, which is to review, discuss and vote on conservation, land donation and the agricultural usage plan. And I think, is Frank still hanging out with us? There's Frank. Hi, Frank. I apologize, I have to step away. I know all about this and I will, I have to step away for five minutes. I'm going to have to flip this to Mr. Vignani. But Frank, if you could outline for the board on about, we'll start with the Zero Glades. That would be great.
Sounds good. The commission was approached by a landowner at the end of Glades Road before you go into the Glades Gate with approximately ten acres of, of marshland, a small piece of upland for access and then this land sort of between Glades Road and, and heading towards Cohasset Harbor. And they'd like to donate that land to the town of Situate. Right now, the property has a small camp on it, it's on piers. The commission is interested or would really like to accept this piece of property. The landowners agreed to remove their camp and, and, and clean that off the site. And the commission is unanimously in favor of, of acquiring this piece of property. It's, it's going to give very limited access, but it will give some public access to the marsh in that area. It seems to meet with our standards. It abuts another piece of town marshland and I, I just couldn't see a, a reason that we would not want to make this piece of town property. Uh, I, I, it's hard to describe it, but I don't know if Lorraine can.
We have a picture, I think, Frank.
We have a number of pictures. We've got the appraisal, which had a lot of great photos.
Karen, do you, do you see the, what's the amount of taxes we get on that property? Not much, right?
No, very, very little.
Great. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No, but I'll say it's beautiful. It looks beautiful, so.
Say no and then talk.
Is that the rule? Okay.
Ms. Connolly?
I'll, I just have one brief question, only kidding, never mind. One quick question.
Yes, Mara.
I do have a quick question. Mr. Vice Chair. Frank, does this have, is this conservation land, is it all wet? Or is there any ability to do like a dirt path or permeable path out towards the marsh area?
It's basically marsh where you access the property. There's like a very small area where maybe a, a car or two could be parked, but then it goes right to marsh. So any permanent walkway would have to be something that was built on piers or something like that.
Okay, thank you. It is beautiful and very, very generous of the residents.
Yes. Karen, did you have a question or not?
No.
Okay.
I, I really, I really not trying to be, what, what reason would we not accept this? Like besides any tax revenue, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything, right? There's no, okay.
The, the owner explained to us that his dad, doctor, McGovern, had, had this piece of property and they basically let it go so that this old camp that was there and used for years has been basically abandoned. And the family in, in settling up some of their estates would like to donate this to the town. And they've agreed to remove this, the building that's on it and, and clean that up. And that was our stipulation. So right now, it's, in some ways, a little bit of a hazard. It's an unoccupied building on, on the marsh, so I, I really can't see a reason not to do that.
Karen?
Mr. Chair, I, is the home, are the, it's an estate and it's the executors that are proposing to donate this land. I thought, I remember that they were asking for two things. One was a plaque commemorating their dad, which shouldn't be a problem. But the other was the question of abating the tax bill back to the date of, I believe, his death, which is October-ish twenty twenty. So my question is, are they still asking for that? And is it possible for us to do that? And if it's possible, who actually does it?
I think that's a Jim question.
They, they could have baited, yep. We talked to them, so. That's what the overlay account is for.
And as you.
To Joe, and I think he's already done it, actually.
Oh. Good old Joe, thank you.
Frank, just one quick question from me. What are we going to do with the land? Are we going to put a, a CR on it? Are we just going to open it up to the public for access? What, what's the plan?
So because we're not, we're not acquiring it with community preservation funds, we don't have to put a CR on it. There's a lot of conservation land in Situate without a CR. We'll, we'll have this commemorative plaque for, for the former owner. And we, we'll have to look at where you drive in there and see if there isn't some way we can create a couple of parking spots or, or something similar to what we've done with other properties that have, have come on board. You know, where, once the Sunset Road property comes on, the commission will have to take a look at that and figure out how to get folks' access and if that's important. The other thing is people can walk there from the neighborhood. So some of those are just, it's important to have all property, doesn't really have parking. It just has access from the neighborhood or parking along the street and it seems to work out.
Yeah, great, it's beautiful. Anyone from the public have any comments? And either raise your hand or open up your video. All right, seeing none. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well done, thank you, Tony.
Any questions, Karen?
I, I love this property, so thank you very much for having this opportunity. So I would entertain a motion if there are no further comments.
Sure, move that the select board accept a donation from Mr. Kevin P. McGovern of, sorry, my finger's in the way, of, accept the donation, oh, I didn't see what it's saying. Mr. Kevin P. McGovern of land at Zero Rerick Glades Road with no structures to the Town of Situate Conservation Commission.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then this call requires a roll call vote.
This can.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with our appreciation and thanks.
Can we write a letter?
Sorry?
Can we write a letter to thank them?
Yes, that's a brilliant suggestion. And I will, I will, I will work with Rain on that tomorrow. Thank you.
I'll take care of that.
I, I was, I was tripping on my words because I have to, I just want to tell the board that my, I always tell you, my husband tried to figure out some way we could move into that jack because it's such a beautiful property. I didn't have to recuse myself because obviously that was not going to happen, but that's great. Okay, so the motion carries five zero. We appreciate the donation and we will do the detail work behind to make it happen. All right, that brings us to the second portion of our Conservation Commission, which is revisiting the Appleton Field Agricultural Cultural Usage Plan. The board did discuss this generally last meeting and asked for just sort of how it was going to be structured, how it would work, more details. And we were provided with that in our backup and it was great. I see we have Mr. Gallagher with us. So do you want to just give us the, the thirty thousand foot view of this? And I'm sure the board has some questions because we all reviewed our packets.
Sure, happy to. So since we last spoke at the prior meeting, we settled on some details. I think that the vision for this year is really to focus on launching some small-scale community farming. There's a lot of work to be done out there. I think we can envision maybe five to ten plot holders who are willing to sort of be pioneers and get some fencing back up and figure out how to get their own, own water in and potentially work with the trailer to really get things going and, and start kind of converting the land back to a usable status for, for next year and maybe some broader growing. There are some questions before. Status for, for next year and maybe some broader growing. There are some questions before about, you know, what, the sort of the scale and the capacity. That could be accommodated out there for community gardening. And I wanted to clarify that, you know, I, I've presented this and been asked, you know, why are we giving away so much of this potentially to a commercial grower when we should save it for community plots? And then also how many, you know, this is going to be overrun by community gardeners. So there is plenty of room for community gardeners. But I think the vision would be five to 10 first year, 10 to 20 second year at best. And then kind of assess what parking capacity, water capacity is on the property and make a plan from there to see what, ultimately what. Community gardening capacity there is. I think we have the vision for what we may want to see from a commercial grower. With someone sort of growing locally, making the food available locally. You know, doing it in ecologically sensitive way, growing organically. I think we do need more support on figuring out how to do, properly do an RFP. And, and what sort of license may be doable. So that I think there's more details to be settled there over the course of this year to hopefully open that for next year. I think those are the keys. We have, you know, a, a good band of volunteers. Ken Swart and John Belber were here last time. They're ready to, to lead the volunteers with their expertise. So I think we're in good position to start small and, and build from there. But a lot of the, there, there are a lot of details, you know, we, we borrowed, mostly borrowed the rules and regulations of Teak Sherman. That operation has been going well. So big thanks to Sustainable Situate and the leadership at Teak Sherman for sort of making that available. And, and letting us use their framework for this, for this project.
Great, thanks, Andy. So as, if I read it correctly, the proposal is the first year. It's sweat equity for the folks that would be clearing, you know, literally, you're right, they're pioneers, clearing the land. And, and resurrecting and there would be a fee structure. I have a bunch of questions, but I will, I will let, I'd like to open them to the board and not monopolize. So if the board would like to ask some questions, let me know. Otherwise I'm monopolized.
I had one. Thank you so much for putting in all the detail and, and the process. It was really helpful, Andy. For the first part of, first segment of community growers, will you be conducting a lottery? You know, how, how are you ensure, you know, real fairness and transparency to who gets those first lots? That wasn't clear to me in reading the, the detail, but I may have missed it.
Yeah, you know, that, that wasn't in there. Lottery, I think, is, is the way to go. Honestly, it's not in there because I, I mean, we're going to, we're going to put this out. I think, I don't know how popular it will be in year one, knowing how much work will have to be done. So.
That's true.
Too worried about that. But I think we can add in that, you know, should, should there be more demand than spots a lottery would, would sell out.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the greater public knows about it. It's not just, you know, friends of friends who are gardeners and that we really make sure that everybody in Situate understands that this is a new initiative.
Absolutely.
Other questions, Mr. Goodrich?
I was curious, what, what was the rationale? To make this only an organic, for organic pesticides and organic fungicides and herbicides?
Yeah, it's, you know, as a conservation property, we want to take care of it as, as best we can. So organic practices are going to be more ecologically friendly. And that, that property in particular drains, you know, abuts and drains directly into the self swamp. Which is the, the drinking water source for, you know, several reservoirs. So we want to be careful with that and make sure that we aren't putting chemicals, you know, out into the field that then are going into the swamp.
I mean, organic pesticides are chemicals. I mean, chemicals are chemicals and they are toxic. That's why they kill bugs. Right? And they kill her. That's what a herbicide is. They kill.
Right, so yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm curious why we don't use the USDA guidelines or mass agriculture guidelines. I, I come to this as we've just spent the last year. Talking about science and how through this pandemic, we care about science. And I just don't know if, I mean, I want to make sure if there's not something that's more drought resistant. Or that we might use less toxins. It's organic or not, that we're not going to limit people, right? Because there's no limit on how much you could put on if it's organic. And it's still toxic, right? So I just want to make sure that we're not going to. Be putting limits on people that might actually be, I just, if, if there's a scientific reason, I'd love, I'd love to see it. Because I just want to make sure that we're following the same guidelines that we would with the FDA and USDA.
Yeah, and I, I probably should have brought John Belver along for this because he would be able to speak to this certainly a lot better than I. And I, I hesitate to even dive into any detail because this is a little bit out of my league and sort of taken from him. I think the, the general idea is to use whenever possible naturally occurring substances and not artificial chemicals. So sort of not just sort of a label, a label of organic. The, the issue with making it any sort of like official organic. You know, growing, there's costs associated with that. There's, there's some sort of complications that would maybe make it impossible for just your average grower to, to use it. So it, some of it will be in spirit and monitored by, you know, some of the folks that, that know what they're doing out there. And, and know best practices for environmentally friendly growing.
So they know what they're, I, I guess I just want to make sure that we, when people say they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, exactly what, like, I'd love to know what exactly are those? I mean, these are still toxic pesticides, right? They kill bugs. So what precisely are we putting in? I don't care if the label says conventional, who makes it, or they're still killing things. And if it's copper or other things, it's still going to get into our water system. And some of these kill fish. And it might be the best way. Organic may be the absolute best way to go.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I just want to make sure that environmentally, we know not just someone's whim. That we have proven, you know, before we're making sure we're putting all these chemicals. There's still chemicals in the ground. And we kind of know what, what those, the limits are. Because as of right now, it could be unlimited of how much you could put in, right? You're not going to say, put in 50 pounds of sulfur. Sulfur's organic.
Just because they're organic doesn't mean they're not regulated, does it? I mean.
The amounts?
I, I think we could solve it by, by making sure that the language in, in the application and in the reg, you know, the rules are. You know, that you are, you know. My, I don't know, we've, we've come up with the right words. Mindful of protecting the watershed, which abuts. And then using all appropriate, you know, measures to do so, which would encompass, you know. As, as maybe you pointed out, arsenic is natural. We don't want to use that.
This is a great time to, to vet these questions and, and that's what we'd like to hear from you. And, and we would like to move this along as the growing season is on us. I think that the area that's going to be worked with this year is going to be relatively small. And whatever was done there would have probably an inconsequential impact for this year. But if it would be all right with Mr. Goodrich, I think we can work further at, at kind of weeding this out, if you will. And let us, let us come up with, with a little bit more rules. We have, I think we have some very responsible folks helping us in this regard. And I think we can come up with, with a responsible plan.
No, I'm totally on board with moving forward. I just, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're, just that we're following the right.
It, it absolutely makes. It absolutely makes sense and it's the best way to get these questions out here. So we appreciate that and it's something we can work at.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Conley and then Mr. Vignani?
Um, yes, I'd like to ask about, isn't Teak Sherman, are they using organic methods? Are there rules and regulations that are used at Teak Sherman? Maybe Frank is laughing because the answer is no.
No, they are, but, but I don't think Penny can, Penny has to unmute herself.
No, she's unmuted.
I'm unmuted. I'm here. Teak Sherman is completely organic. All right, so you're using the natural pesticides. And that's how it was set up and that's how it's been run.
And John Belver's Holly Hill Farm is an organic farm, is it not?
Yes.
I'm assuming he's bringing a lot of the practices to bear.
Yes.
Teak Sherman. And we have kids from our schools go over to Holly Hill. I've been there with the school group, so I know they do it. So I think, Andrew, the fact that we have some already existing expertise makes me feel better about. And, and there are a lot of arguments, as you point out, about what is organic, what is not organic. Who gets to say they're, they are making organic wine, what all the definitions are. But I think if, if we can be assured that Teak Sherman is being run responsibly. And hopefully the same practices will be maybe even improved at Appleton if it's possible to do that.
I just, I just, I don't want to limit people. If you believe in science, and the science says something is safe. And it's drought resistant, just like we do with Dr. Fauci, like we do for every, I trust the science. If the science says it's okay and the science says it's right, I want to follow it. And if it's better, and if it's not organic, but it might save water, I want to explore it. That's, I just don't want to limit our options. That's all I'm trying to say.
Okay. Well, I think, I think the message is delivered. And you've got some time to tweak that. Mr. Vignani, did you want to add to?
Definitely not to the science. I just had a question on, in looking at the map, the commercial aspect of this property has got to be 85%. Of something of the property. And up in the top, it says that, that they're going to, you know, help maintain the, the property in totality. And distribute of food and native plants within Situate local vendors from. Does that mean sell or does that mean give? And I'm, I'm just wondering if there should be some component of food that goes to the food pantry. Or something like that. I didn't know if that is what you mean here.
Yeah, so the, the, the plan is to have certain areas of the community section for food pantry growing. And so anyone with a plot is going to play a role in that and, and deliver, will deliver weekly. And then the commercial grower in handling all these tasks like edge mowing and, you know, things that require equipment that they may have. Will be contributing to that, you know, as well. But they're, what, they would be growing commercially to then sell, you know, what, what they're growing. In, in their areas.
Yeah, in, in the back, there is a lot of detail about the food pantry support and requirement for, for people that are doing their own lots. So I thought that was really well thought up.
I don't see that in the.
Yes.
Document I'm reading.
Part of it, Tony, sorry. Just kidding.
So is this one, this two pager, three pager? So that's just an overview? I just don't know if you put it in there just so it's clear. I don't know, did they have to give 10% of their yield to the food pantry? Is there something like along those lines?
Not for the grower. Well, and that, that's the part that I think we need to develop over the next year of exactly what we can put into a license. Through, you know, through that process of, of how can we, that part, I think, is what we need to settle.
Okay, so you're still creating, you're still creating a license then? This is just conceptual and then we'll get the.
Right, right now we're asking to sort of launch the community growing aspect for this season and then come back and, and continue to develop.
Okay, so I guess my feedback would be if you could put a hard component of there that says. You know, everybody's expected to give 10% of their yield to the food pantry or something like that, then that would be.
Yep.
Be great.
Are you finished, Mr. Vignani?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other board questions?
I just have one. Are we giving preference to the commercial growers to Situate commercial growers?
That would be the goal.
Ideally, yeah.
We'll, we'll have to develop an RFP for the commercial growers, but it would be Situate growers first.
I, I assume if there's more individuals that have show interest that we move those lines a little bit.
Absolutely. It's a big, but it's a huge field.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The only question that I don't think we've covered that I just wanted to just quickly go through was. Just, just sort of the leader, two, two components, sort of the leadership component. I know that this team is great. We know that they're experienced, so I feel very comfortable with it. It, and it did say that Conservation would oversee the field and that maybe. And that somebody from Conservation would be part of that team, the leadership team. I, I just, I know that it's Situate, sorry, I'm baby, I'm puppy sitting. The Sustainable Situate is the, is the sort of steward of finances and things for Teak Sherman. And it's proposed here that Holly Hill played that role. I have full confidence that they are able to do that in, in great stead. But the question comes up, obviously, is that's a Hingham organization. Do we, are, is the board comfortable that the structure proposed is, are they comfortable with the structure proposed? Do we want it to be a, do we, do we want to put it more firmly under Conservation? Or do we, are we comfortable with the sort of third party 501(c) being the financial and management steward? And that was, that was really more of a question for the board as I looked at the, the way it was proposed. Has anyone? Did that, did that jump out at anyone else or did they have any concerns?
No, it's a good point.
So the, I think the reason we went there in, the, the Teak Sherman folks weren't. Really embracing to, doing more at the moment, you know, we can, we can see how that goes. But they, that's their entity and they, they control that. Nancy's up in the corner there and, and trying to take these amounts of money and run them through the town. It, it is hard for everybody. It's hard for the commission or whatnot. And so I thought, we thought that while Holly Hill was willing to do that, they, they have the credentials to do that. And the tax. Ability to do that. So that just seemed like the. Sort of the path of least resistance for this, for this year. Maybe in time we can develop something else or maybe we can come up with something better. But we were, again, trying to move this along in this season where it's so close. And to be quite honest, that was just the, the quickest way to get us.
No, I, I think it's a, I think it's a very, it's a very appropriate solution. And, you know, I have absolutely no issue with their, their, I mean, they're part of our community just because they're over that border. So that I have no problem with. But perhaps when, you know, as one of the last action items is, you know, whatever, however we craft that agreement with them. You know, we make sure that we have the, the explicit right to revisit if for some reason we need to.
Sure.
Karen?
I have a suggestion. Perhaps Holly Hill would be amenable to putting a Situate citizen representative on their board. Something you could ask John. I, I don't know how they're set up. And I don't know, you know, who is on their board. But if there isn't a Situate person, perhaps we could request that they add a Situate person.
Well, John's a Situate resident.
John, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, that's.
Okay.
It's, because obviously so, he's so involved in our community.
Right.
Okay, so as I see it, we had four things that were four action items. Define organic to, and to make sure that we're protecting our watershed and not. Overlooking sort of water conservation opportunities. To define the license more clearly to support the food pantry as well. To give Situate residents priority on the commercial piece of it. And to just make sure that there's some sort of wiggle room in any kind of agreement we make with Holly Hill, just, just in case. Is, is there anything I'm missing, guys? Do you feel you have enough direction to get us, get shovels in the ground soon? Okay, all right. So you'll circle back with those final things and I don't, Jim, do we need to actually vote approved? What, what action or are we just giving direction at this point?
If you're ready to go, I would vote to approve it.
Okay. Would someone want to make a motion to approve with those instructions? Or would you like to wait until we see further? I'm comfortable.
I make a motion to approve the community gardening proposal put forth by. I make a motion to approve the community gardening proposal put forth by the Conservation Commission. With the understanding that we will get answers to the questions raised tonight.
Well done, uh, moved by Ms. Conley. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, did you like to add further comments?
No, it's good.
All right, I was reading your thought bubble. Fine, any other firm? Uh, I, I'm sorry, before we vote, I did not give anyone an opportunity in the public that hasn't spoken. If anyone would like to discuss the proposed Appleton Field Community Garden Proposal. Uh, now is your chance to raise your hand or take your video off. And I see none, so we can go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vannani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero, five zero. We look forward to uh working with you on this project. And uh, and uh, you know, I know there'll be robust community outreach, so thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy and Penny.
All right, it is uh now nine o'clock, and I'm chagrin to admit this is the latest we've been off schedule in my tenure. And I'm just horrified. Um, does anyone require a short break? Or do we want to keep plowing through? I took mine already, so um. All right, you guys are tougher than me.
I'm okay.
Okay, um, all right, then let's uh, let's, I know that everyone is very anxious to hear the results of the uh survey for the. Uh, community, Harbor Community Building, and I will turn that over to Mr. Bedrow to um, to present. Did I give you that honor before? Sorry.
In effort to get back on uh track, the winner of the survey was Parkies. Any questions?
Did you say something? Was that something about the Macarena? I didn't hear you.
Winner was Parkies, so we, we did.
Oh, parking lot, we're doing a parking.
People want uh park use, do they want a maritime use, do they want some sort of community center? Or combined use, and almost forty-three percent, forty-two point three five percent picked a park use. Um, the next was combined use at twenty-nine point two two. But when I go through the comments, a lot of the combined uses, some sort of boating there, kayak launch, docks, piers. We really don't have access to the water from that position. Pretty docks and piers and boat, boat yards, blocking our access to the ocean from that location. Um, you know, uh, number fifty-one, comment fifty-one, a splash pad would be amazing.
What a good idea.
I don't know who wrote that one. Another, we have learned during the COVID pandemic, situated has a relief for multi-generational outdoor space. So there was a lot of talk about combining a park with some sort of either educational function room. Uh, and the other thing, and I've been reading these all day, and I'll throw them, there's uh over seven hundred comments, I believe. We had over a thousand responses. Uh. People like to see a bathroom in the harbor. I think that's a common.
Right.
Common refrain. So you've got this, I don't want to spend a lot of time telling you what you already know. The original survey done by the reuse committee was a park. This survey done years later is some sort of park use. So the question is, does the board now want to pursue a park-like development there? And what do you want that to look like? And what road do you want to go down at this point um to do it? I mean, I, I know I've, I've talked to Morris since I've been here. She's always said, you know, bathrooms somewhere in the harbor. And again, that was a big thing for people, and it is kind of in the middle. Right there, before you get out to a seat of point in the lighthouse. So I think it's a pretty clear win for park use. Again, there is some combine there. But any type of structure beyond something small, I think would be prohibitively expensive. What we're seeing for construction costs, just normally without putting a, a structure, would have to be up on piers. To get out of the flood zone, then you'd have to have all the ramps and associated handicap accessibility for people to get into it. It'd be another building that we would have to maintain uh and keep. And there are still the restrictions on the MBTA. We have to be very careful what we did there. Really couldn't be a, a function hall. It would have to be something else that could also be used as a function hall. But uh, you know, I think the town has enough buildings. I'm, I'm not real keen on adding a building. Unless it's something small and easy to maintain. So my recommendation would be to start down the road of looking at what we want for a park. I think we'd want to accommodate uh, put a couple bathrooms into that. And you can get bathrooms that are are pre-built and automatically clean them. Tony, we saw some of those in Ireland. That after you exit the, the bathroom, it shuts itself down, steam cleans itself, and opens itself back up. Um, so we could do things like that that require a minimum of maintenance and effort in our park. But uh, I'd like to know what the board thinks based on what they've seen and what type of direction we want to go in. I'd like to just at least start down the road and we can get an idea of what we want, and then go talk to the Community Preservation Committee. To combine with us using some of our funding that we have left over in the MBTA account to do something down there.
Great, thanks, Jim. Yeah, I think, you know, it was great. Over, what is, one thousand forty-three people responded and, you know, and. I, I, and the consensus, I mean, there are, there were things on the margin, but the consensus was pretty clear. And it was, it was gratifying to see that it supported what people thought in twenty-twelve when the original survey was out there. So I think we have a pretty good direction as a board of what the community likes. And you're right, now we need to drill down on what those options are, what the cost pricing looks like. So um, you know, and I think there's some, there's some real. Uh, I know that I've personally been getting calls from everybody that's got a great idea uh that can fit into that space. So I think we need to vet all of those and come up with a, you know, I don't know, a handful that um, that we can then put forward to the. Community again as a more defined plan. Um, but I'd love to hear what you guys think. And and because the background's good. Are we going to be putting out that data? Has we already done that? I know that a lot of.
We can post, I don't think we have yet. I mean, I wanted to present it to you first, make sure you had it before everybody else had it.
Okay.
We can, we can just post a PDF of all the responses.
Okay, um. Mr. Goodrich, Mr. Number Fifty-One?
I was not fifty, it really wasn't me. I really didn't do it. I mean.
More than one person that that thought that that we should do a planet does, so.
I'll thank Amy. Um, so I guess, number one, just, can we just say thank you to the public for these comments? Which are so helpful and are amazing. And there were some common themes of making sure that we see and we can, we can have. The view, the viewability was very important as well. And 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 the park um aspect, obviously. You know my feelings on the splash pad. I won't put a motion for it tonight. I will say on this, though, and and that I, I would love for us, for situat to be a first for something. And that's not to ma, to make, to make sure that this space is actually not ADA um compliant. But ultra ADA compliant. And I'd love to have the first uh adult changing table in one of our bathrooms. Which is, if you've got a kid with special needs, who's twelve or thirteen, that does not exist in town. Doesn't, I don't even think there's one in Plymouth County. Um, and the challenge is for those, for those folks, I just want to make sure, even though there might be some added expense. I'd love to make sure we, we bring in some of those needs as well, but I, I just want to say thank you um to the folks.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I have to say, you bring up a really good point that I think that because there's so much consensus and there's so many. Opportunities this site that, you know, leaning on the expertise of our committees and boards and committees. You know, I could pick a five right now that need to be part of this conversation. Um, so I think our next step is to kind of come up with a plan of how to bring those voices in and to flesh it out. Are there other suggestions that you guys really saw jump out that we should hone in on that were a part of that? Uh, Karen?
Yeah, well, I think the big, big question is, do we take that building down? Or do we leave it? Do we modify it? Because it's, it takes up such a big chunk. And if you're going to build a park.
Yeah, the consensus was remove it.
I, I think if you, if you want to do anything to really snatch that building up. And really make repairs to it and make it so it's one of the things people want to see. At the educational, uh, you know, you need to go and do new bathrooms, um, all that stuff. And now you're getting close to that threshold where you're going to have to elevate the building.
Right.
At that point.
That was my question.
Right.
You know, it's fifty percent of the value of the building. And if you were going to put that on an assessors diagram, the lot's worth a lot, the building not so much.
Correct, so.
You start playing around, doing stuff, especially with what we're seeing for construction costs now. You know, new doors, new windows, new bathrooms. Um, it'd get expensive in a hurry, and you start pushing up against it. Even if it didn't hit the threshold for being elevated, I would think we should.
Right.
One, because it's the right thing to do, and two, because if we're going to have a building there, it's going to be cheaper in the long run. Because at a high tide with a storm, it floods. So I would recommend if we want a building there, it's going to have to be up no matter what.
But then that's really going to make handicap accessibility very difficult. Um, I know it's possible, but just the um, we don't need to debate it tonight, but I think Andrew's point was well made. Um, and that was my question too, Karen, was whether or not if, what's the minimal amount that we can touch it or renovate it? That doesn't activate that raising, yeah, the flood raising.
Value of the building.
Excuse me?
Fifty percent of the value of the building. If you, if you do work that is, this is the flood regulations for homeowners, I'm guessing it's the same for us. If you do work that equals more than fifty percent of the value of the structure, then you must come into compliance with um any of the codes.
Any of the floods, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would, I would recommend, I mean, and to Andrew's point, thank you so much to everybody that answered. I was thrilled to see that people want it to be a park and would love just to make it a park, small visitor center where folks have. Public bathrooms, additional parking, can enjoy the harbor. I mean, I think it's, it's just such an iconic location. And opening it up to everybody in town is, is really what we should do, and it sounds like hopefully we'll do. What I would recommend is that, you know, to your point, Karen Canfield, um, when we put together a small committee like we did for the golf committee. Um, you know, that committee was just so highly effective because they were just really focused on um, just improving that one property. And I thought, you know, i- if we can put together a very small group with maybe two board members to come back to the board with some final ideas. We can move this along pretty quickly. That would be my recommendation. I, I think that's brilliant. Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I think the good news is we actually have in town a few people who have recently done things like playgrounds. And that spent a lot of time making sure that they were, you know, handicap friendly, special needs friendly. Um, and that, that did a very good job on that. So um, I think we're lucky that we've had some people do some recent work.
Okay, um, I think that's a great plan, a great suggestion, Ms. Curran. I think we should just figure out who, you know, what that looks like and then get it out there for population as soon as possible. So um, perhaps uh Andrew and Jim can, or I, some combination of us can uh just flesh that out. And then put it to the board for um approval next week. I shouldn't take.
What I would ask the board to think of as we get into that is the charge for the committee. Whether you want to see what I would call a passive park or a park with active recreation. You know, some people said I, a wall with tennis, a pickleball court. You know, the splash pad, those are what I would call an active recreation component as opposed to pass. Uh, benches, maybe a small gazebo or performance stage that you can use now and then, just to give the committee. You know, they don't, I don't want the committee coming back, saying we're going to put a Ferris wheel and an amusement park and the board saying we just want. Just want passive benches. So I think the board needs to think about, uh, at least from a conceptual standpoint. Somewhere along that active passive dichotomy.
Be more, yeah, I'd be more inclined for passive, because I also think we need additional parking. And the more you put active recreation there, the fewer parking spots you have. Because we've been trying to find additional parking in the harbor for years. And um, this would also, you know, if it's ten spots, fifteen spots, that's ten more than we had over, over the other side of Cold Parkway, so. But I hear you. Yeah, Jim, I think that definition we can glean from, from the comments because they're so thoughtful. You know, we can come up with three buckets of what people are thinking and, and then have those fleshed out. Sound like a plan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm showing you up with something.
Okay. Um, good, all right. Is everyone comfortable that we know what next steps are? All right, again, thank you to everybody that participated. We're uh, you know, we're ready to launch um, uh, some real action here. So I'm really excited about that. Okay. We are now up to the eight-thirty discussion on the contract for the over, unwind overhead doors at the fire station. Ms. Holt, oh, and Mr. Kelly has joined us.
Good evening.
How are you, Kevin?
Good, how are you?
Good. We have, uh, we do have all the backup. Uh, this is a sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollar and fifty-one dollar, fifty-one cent contract for the first parish fire station, right? Is it falling down, Kevin?
The, the, the stations are falling down, but the doors are falling down on top of very expensive apparatus. So we've had quite a few issues. The doors are twenty-four years old, and they've been failing. I actually looked it up. Nancy helped me look at, Nancy actually looked it up the other day. We um, in the last um, since two thousand seventeen, I think, we've spent just about fourteen thousand dollars repairing those doors. Um, and uh, last month, uh, door number two did come down as a uh, the pumper was leaving. Uh, anybody that drove by there three months ago, two months ago, could see that the captain's cow was sitting in there with the door partially open. With the stick under it so they could get out under the door. So that was the reason that we went to uh the November special town meeting for the appropriation. And um, looking for approval for unwind doors for the sixty-six thousand for the contract to do the doors.
All right, and thank you for pointing out, yes, this was, has already been presented to town, been approved, and this is the contract to get it done. Um, are there any um questions from the board on this matter? I'm seeing none. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move to award a contract to Unwind Overhead Doors Incorporated of Chickaby, Mass. In the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Moved by Mr. Vannani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Is there any further discussion on this matters? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vannani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries uh five zero. Thank you, Kevin, for staying up with us.
Thank you, and thank the, the, you just made the fire chief and the captains and all the staff at Station One very happy.
We'd like to help them. When, when will the installation be?
Um, he said with the uh, this is one of the materials that is running a little behind with um, the, the pandemic. So the lead time on the ordering of the arrival of the doors, he said it's four to six weeks.
No, okay, that's not.
Hopefully, we can get that placed tomorrow and get them in right away.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Kevin.
Great, thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Night.
The next item is our eight forty to discuss the change to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to make the town employee a voting member. And Ms. Curran has been doing yeoman's work, attending all of these meetings, so I will turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. So um, the DEI committee members discussed a couple of times during the meetings. Um, the membership and uh, one of the, our town representative Lucia, who's just awesome. Um, brought up a concern, you know, she really wants to be an active participant. She takes her responsibility very seriously, and she feels very strongly that she would like to be a voting member. And she thinks, you know, it would also provide good representation to the town staff as well. And maybe there'd be, you know, a little bit more confidence that, you know, she's, she's also representing them. You know, she does take her role very seriously. So the DEI committee did talk about it at length. Because they did recognize that it sort of tips that, that balance that you tip, you know, we always, you know, typically strive for, which is to have an odd number. Um, but, you know, they, they understand that there, if there is a tie vote. But, you know, they, they understand that there, if there is a tie vote, because really what will happen is currently there's seven voting members, right? If we see, if the town staff representative position moves to a voting member, that'll make eight total voting members. So certainly an opportunity for tie votes. I did make it very clear to them that tie votes means a no vote, right? So they had that question. So I clarified that. And they were all, they were all pretty comfortable with that. They all, they all want to support Lucia and in her desire to really have an active role in the committee. So that's number one, something that we have to take on. And then number two, we did have a resignation. And I don't think we're taking that up this evening, but I did want you to know that Kim Harriman had to resign just for personal reasons. Just work commitment. We all know how that happens. We, you know, think we can take, take things on and life gets in the way. And she was a terrific asset to the committee. So we're sorry to lose her. But I think at our up next meeting, we're going to have to also open up discussion for replacing Kim's vacancy. So we can talk about that. But going back to the non-voting member, that's where we're at. And just curious what the board thinks because I think we need to vote to change it since it is indicated as such in the charge.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Curran. Any comments or questions from the board? No. Great. Then on the second matter first, and we will certainly put that on the agenda for our next meeting to, to review replacement because we had, as everybody, we remember, we had a unbelievably strong pool of applicants. And I, I would recommend that we go back to the pool and not reinvent the wheel on that one. So if no one objects to that, we will, we will proceed with that and put that on the agenda for next week. And then, then if there are no other comments about changing that, I think it'd be terrific. And I really thank Lucia for taking, wanting to take on this responsibility. I think it's great. Would anyone care to make a motion on this matter?
Move to update the diversity, equity and inclusion committee charged to change the town employee to a voting member of the committee.
Moved by Mr. Veniani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Veniani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero and thank them all. I know that everybody's been working hard, especially you, Mara. Thank you for your stewardship on this.
They have done yeoman's work already. So I think they're coming before the board on the sixth. Are they on for the sixth, Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, for the first quarterly update?
To give their first quarterly update.
Oh, that's good. Gosh, time flies when you're in a pandemic, huh? All right. So without further ado, I know that there are some folks here who've been waiting. Our eight forty-five is to, to review and discuss vote, the food pantry lease at the Old Gates Building. Mr. Bedrow?
Philly standard lease drafted by town council. I spent a little bit of time with Mr. Hunt going back and forth. Some concerns that they have with our lease as we originally proposed it. This is agreeable to both parties. The cost that we have in the lease is basically what Kevin Kelly estimates will cost us to have them in the building for electricity and heat and those things. So at this point, I think it's ready to go. We're looking to get in there on April first. Kevin's working hard to make that happen, but I know the food pantry is out. Their lease is up, they'll be out April first, so they will need a place to go. And as I said, I think we're ready to go. And it's going to be good to have someone in the building because as the senior center wraps up, they're the only people in the building now keeping an eye on the place. So having a tenant in the building, keeping an eye on the place for us will help us maintain the building. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But it's a pretty standard lease. It's a three-year lease with two one-year options. Both parties have the ability to get out with certain notice provisions.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Yeah, we did get the full document and I'm glad you noted that. It, it's the one place where it does deviate from a standard lease is that it's, it, I mean, for lack of a more technical term, it's pretty breakable within reason, and which was one of the concerns we had that, you know, should we find some whiz bang plan for the building in a year or two? We can have that conversation.
Or someone gives the food pantry a pile of money, a piece of land, says, go build your own place. They'll be able to move out and do that too. So and I'm sure that they would be thrilled to have that problem.
We would be happy for them. So does the board have any questions or comments about the proposed lease? Yeah, before I.
So I only have, I had one question just about the, the term and the termination. So we left that wide open because I didn't see anything like usual. You want to give somebody thirty days notice or whatnot.
I think there's notice in there, Mara. There is a notice clause in there. I'd have to dig out.
But there's no day, there's no day to it. It's, there's a notice clause, but there's, there's nothing that says thirty days or sixty days. There are no days. So if it's, if it's open and that's how everybody wants to leave it, that's, that's fine. I just, that's what stood out to me. They do contracts every day. So that just, that just stood out to me.
Yeah, it just says either party may terminate upon written notice. I think under the law and, and just as a fairness, you know, we can't tell the food pantry, you're out, clean out, be out by tomorrow.
Right. And that's sort of why I bring it up. You know, when I look at contracts, I like to read them for the people to read when all of us aren't here anymore, right? Just in case, you never know who's going to be in the job and the role and looking at this. So if they're comfortable with that, that, then, then fine. I just thought there should be some sort of thirty days, sixty days, something in there to give them, you know, proper notice if they need to, if we, if they need to leave. That was my only comment.
Nope.
It's a really.
Not a deal breaker, but just a comment. Yeah. No, I had the same point. It's a good point. I actually think given the parties involved and, and the, you know, obviously the mutually beneficial intent right now.
It does say further down on the lease that the, the lessy, which would be the food pantry, has thirty days to vacate after notification. So that is in there.
Okay.
Okay, where, okay.
I missed that too.
Section eight, non-assignment of, non-assignment licensees shall be moved from the premises on personal property within thirty days after the termination of this license.
Okay.
Okay.
And the only thing I had was the, I know that Kevin is going, is working on the improvements. But it's, there should be some sort of barrier or inhibitor to people getting access to the rest of the building. Not that I'm worried about the pantry, but we're all curious and then we, I want to make sure that folks are confined to the, the appropriate space.
Yeah, Kevin, we'll be making changes to the building that will allow us to secure the rest of the building.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before I, I see Mr. Hunt and Maria are here? I would like to give them an opportunity if they'd like to speak on this matter. All right, nothing from the board? There you go. Hi, thanks for staying up. Sorry we're late. Would you like to add any comments before we have a vote on this matter?
You talking to me?
Mr. Hunt, I'll start with you.
I, I want to, I want to thank the town administrator and, and Mr. Kelly for their encouragement and their participation in the negotiation of this space and the planning board as well. So we're very much looking forward to beginning the necessary improvements so that we can occupy the space and start feeding the residents of Situate one, as we have been. Very much encouraged by this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murray, did you want to add anything?
I'd just like to add my thanks as well to, especially to Jim Bedrow and Kevin Kelly for all their support all the way through this long process of a few years, at least anyhow, that we've been trying to get a space in town. So we're very excited at the pantry. We're very busy with COVID and feeding a lot of, so we can't get in there fast enough to, for our, for our needs. But understanding that it's a, you know, it's quite a space to try and get ready. So soon as it's ready, we'll be ready to go. We're deep into our planning and we're ready to move.
Well, I'm, I'm certain that I speak for the entire board to, that thank you to the pantry for stepping up. And we know, we know that you've been just working overtime to serve our community through this pandemic as you have before, but especially now. So thank you for that. I think all that's left on this matter is to entertain a, a motion. Would anyone like, care to do that?
Sure. Actually, I'm on the next one. Hold on, let me get back there. But I will thank the board in addition for pushing this through. Good idea. Move to approve the license agreement between the town of Situate and the Situate Food Pantry for three twenty-seven First Parish Road has written.
Moved by Mr. Veniani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, I will, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Veniani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries five zero, long time in the making. Thank you for everyone for slogging through to figure out the details on this one.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, good luck. We'll be down there.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Invite us to the ribbon cutting.
We will.
All right, great.
Thanks.
All right. It is nine thirty. We are going to be, we have two more items before we go to our, our our new business. Would anyone on the board care to take a short break? Going once, going twice. Okay, you guys are good tonight. Thank you. So the next is the, to discuss the naming policy. As the board will recall, we, we were approached, we've been approached many times this year with sort of ad hoc memorial requests or dedication requests. And we felt like we needed to really take a pause and make sure that we were applying the same standards to each of these applications and come up with a policy. As well as it was time to create a new inventory of what was available because we have more facilities than we had last time we talked about it. So without knowing to jump back fast enough, Ms. Conley was good enough to take the lead on this and has provided the board with two examples of, of policies in other towns. So I will turn it over to Karen Conley to talk about the next steps in, in developing this policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to first of all, say thank you to Jim. He lit up his town manager network to try to get us some examples from other towns, which probably would have taken me a lot longer than it took him. And then I went online and started researching different other municipalities around the country just to see, you know, what policies they had. The Duxbury policy, I thought, was representative of the type of a policy that Situate may be interested in adopting. On the other hand, the Evanston policy, which was literally just reported out by their parks and rec department last two weeks ago. That was the fruit of a lot of effort, more than a year-long effort on, on that municipality's behalf. It is extremely comprehensive. And the only reason why I wanted us to really look at it is it seems to cover all the bases in terms of at least the questions that I think some of us might have if we didn't have a more thorough policy to look at. So I think the Duxbury policy is, obviously it's much shorter. It is a little more vague and the Evanston policy is very specific and it includes a lot of procedural things that Duxbury's does, isn't quite as procedural. But again, Evanston is a hundred, oh, I don't even know how many people live there. It's, it's a small city. Northwestern University is there. It's very affluent and they have a parks and recreation department. So the one thing I would like to editorialize before we go through the list is whatever we have done in the past, I personally think we should leave that aside because we have done a lot of things in the past for which we didn't have procedures and/or policies. And so just because we've named something before, I don't think necessarily means that we have to take that path going forward. So if, if I can ask everyone to think forward on this policy rather than backward, I think that would help move us along. So the Duxbury guidelines include priorities for naming criteria. It does require seventy-five signatures of vote of residents in support of naming the public policy property, and it requires a public hearing. Evanston includes a lot of guidelines for priority naming criteria. So for example, noted individuals, historic categories, major gifts. And I'll, I'll save myself. As we go down into Evanston, I think you'll see that it raises a lot of sensitive questions that we may want to consider. So did anyone have any comments on the Duxbury policy that they want to share with me?
I like the light.
You like the length? Pithy is good.
Okay. Was there anything, was there anything in the policy that you thought, any of you thought wouldn't be appropriate for Situate or that needs to be more specific for us?
Well, in the light category, I definitely thought having, I mean, we vote, we, we always respond favorably like for the dugout, we got all the letters from the sports organizations. The idea of a threshold of, of a petition or, you know, something like that makes perfect sense to me. You know, we normally get that anecdotally, but I don't, I think, you know, making it requirement makes sense.
Okay.
I don't know what the threshold is, but I liked having that there, something.
Yeah.
I was just going to add on that point. You know, I think it would be very easy to put something on our website where people can go on anonymously support something and leave a comment that would be relevant. You know, for, for something, if there was a petition in place.
Why would you want it anonymous though? Anonymous scares me because then you always have to think about the negative comments that people could potentially make, right? And then
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Not everybody's good.
Yeah, I don't think you want people standing in front of the grocery store trying to get seventy-five signatures on a on a petition to name a field after somebody.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the lines of what we do, like, you know, you know, appropriate references. It's basically references or, you know, you know, we asked Mr. Sullivan to talk to the soccer clubs and things like that when we revisit that conversation. Same kind of idea. So I don't know what that's structured, but I, I'd like to see a component like that where, you know, it's not just Tony coming in and saying, you know, well, well, this, I guess here's a question. Tony comes in and he says, I'm so sad my dog died. I want to buy a bench for my dog.
Could we not talk about benches right now?
Okay, I just used the example.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a really different.
A lamppost.
Okay. Yeah. Let's, let's, let's focus on this.
Yeah.
Naming of major.
Major things.
Facilities, buildings, et cetera, is a different conversation than the benches and those things that we know we have available. And so, and I think that's a different thing than this.
I think it's a very good distinction. Either you're going to just buy that for a family member or whatever.
I think it's a distinction, but I think it should all be rolled into one area. So whatever that policy is today, it rolls into this as well. I think it all needs to be documented in one area. So it's clear when you're reading what the naming of public property means, right? Because that's, I don't see that doesn't really define public property up top in Duxbury. So I think we have to define it. Oh, here we go, buildings, parks, squares, sorry. And ways in a matter of great importance and deserves careful consideration. So that's a little, little vague. Anyway.
Placing a bench and a, you know, a plaque on a bench is a whole different.
I agree.
Okay, so I wanted to deal with the issue of naming major, potentially naming major facilities like fields and that sort of thing. And I think that's what the Duxbury policy is, is getting at. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to see some sort of, you know, wider community support than just a single application. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what that looks like, but I think that needs to be in there. I like that. I think Mar is right. It needs to be clearly defined where the threshold is. You know, definitely not a bench. Is it, you know, a dugout is, you know, where's the, where's the, where's the line? And then there was, what was the third thing that, Duxbury had a third thing?
Ways, meaning roads.
It requires, um, public notice, public hearing notice.
Oh, right, a public hearing.
Right.
Question would be, actually requires two of them, an initial and a second. So the question would be, who pays for those? Does the town pay for those? Or does the applicant pay for those? If the town pays for them, I mean, I defer to Lorraine, but depending where you put them, they can get expensive.
Depending on where you put.
Have a public hearing.
Oh, yep, yep.
Yeah, they're over two hundred dollars each.
Yep.
Two hundred dollars for what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, a public hearing.
Public hearing notice.
Oh, oh, the notice, right.
Well, I, I think, I think if you look at this policy, and I think if you look at Evanston even closer, I think you'll see that they're trying to create certain bars to just someone coming in and saying, I want to name, you know, the park down the street after my mother-in-law. So I think, a- and that's why I put the Evanston policy in there. As long as it is and as painful as it might be to read, it does raise a lot of the questions about how high do you want to make the bars for this? And so, so maybe I can skip down to Evanston and just sort of point out a few of the things, the questions that, that you might want to think about. Let's skip down to, I, I think it's important that when they talk about who you would name a park after or a, a facility, that exceptional individuals, um, historic events, places and individuals, and ma- major gifts. So those are three categories in which you might want to consider naming a field or a, um, a building, whatever. And then if you go down.
I like how they, they differentiate the gift policy too, to your point about the benches, Karen.
Well, again, I, 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 I feel like the benches and all those other things will be added to our policy once we get there. But my thinking, it was more important for us to address this big, big question.
Sure.
So, um, and they also have the section about renaming. And, you know, when you think about naming, uh, let's just call it a field after someone, should there be, there should be a process, I would assume, of more public hearings if you wanted to rename a facility. And second of all, do you want to, um, put a time limit on naming things? So that the name has to be either renewed or expires after twenty-five or thirty years is, is a question. Um, this is an interesting, uh, naming of parks and recreational facilities after individuals or a group of individuals who perish or survive a tragic event or war should be considered only well after the public shock generated by the tragic event or war has lessened so that no less than ten years have passed after the event.
I think I'd like to have some time to read some of this in more depth because you're right, they do. I mean, I don't know that we have to wait seven years after someone passes to name a park or, or whatever, right?
That's, well, right. In their, in their policy, typically, such naming after an individual should not occur until that individual has been deceased for at least seven years. And the, the individual's historical significance and good reputation have been secured in history. So I, I would actually like the board to really pay attention to those sections of the Evanston policy. We may not want to get that specific. We may not want to answer those questions, but I think we need to consider whether we do want to answer those questions. And in Situate's case, me, we may want to say, well, you don't, uh, you can't name a, a place after an individual until they've been deceased for two years. Maybe seven years is too much. Maybe we don't want that policy at all. Um, so.
So Karen, do you want us to all go, I mean, I read this.
Yeah.
Um, do you want us to all go through and highlight sections of it that we think are interesting and send it back to you?
Yes.
Put it in a document?
And I would have done that prior, but we have to discuss it in an open public meeting. Now you can, th- this, these documents are out there. I think it's all right, Jim, for them to send me comments back, right? What they like, what they don't like, what they would like us to at least consider. Does that make sense? And then we don't have to.
We send them to Jim.
We don't have, okay, send it to Jim.
Yep.
All right. And then we don't have to edit in public.
Yeah, but thank you for doing the work because they are, i- it's interesting. The Evanston one is extremely comprehensive.
Yeah, they took a year to get it done.
Yeah.
Well, it's, well, it's, it's a university town. I'm sure there were twenty professors on the committee.
Yeah, exactly.
Good point.
They probably borrowed Northwestern University's policies on naming of buildings and fields.
Yeah. Well, we have one Karen Conley, so I think we'll end up with a good place too, so.
And they also, they, they do have the application process, which again, you know, I think there's a big difference between an applica- uh, between a policy and a procedure. I think policies you want to change rarely, whereas procedures, you can modify them as you go along. And, uh, I want to thank Lorraine and, um, Michelle. They gave me a list of all the current benches that we've got out there. But we probably need to have maybe some interns this summer go around town and look at everything that's got a name on it so that we actually have a, a list somewhere in the town archives, town history as to, well, who is Teague Sherman? Right? Um, why was, uh, whatever trail named after someone? So, um, and I think that the other thing we have is, I think we might want to look at having the recreation department be the first stop for people who are actually a- asking to name a field or other sort of, um, recreational facility after someone. Uh, same thing for conservation. They should take charge of, uh, deciding if someone wants to name a trail after someone, uh, that, that they would be the originator of that. And that I would like to suggest that perhaps the beautification committee could be part of the, the benches, clocks, et cetera. Because, you know, there comes a point where you really do have to think about what is something going to look like in whatever, uh, wherever, and they could keep track of, you know, where we have things that are more on the order of benches, clocks, et cetera. And I actually did read, I think it was Plymouth, basically said, no more clocks. So, no more clocks.
Yeah, I like the idea of having it vetted by, uh, um, one of our advisory, an appropriate advisory committee. You know, so that when it comes before us, because that's always our first question is, you know, what is their accent about this? What is, you know, so-and-so think about it? So I like that piece.
I'd also like to thank Lorraine for sending over the school's policy because they have their own policy as to naming things, and which brings up another whole, uh, kettle of fish as to the
Marriage.
The athletic complex at the high school, for example.
Yeah, well, part of the, uh, part of this process was so that once we came up with what we were comfortable with, we would sit with the school committee and do sort of a reconciliation so that they, you know, they weren't, um, o- opposition of one another. And
Yeah, so number one, thank you so much for getting the, I mean, and, and having this distinction between the amenities uh, and the larger picture. That distinction you've made is not very helpful, but it's, it's wonderful, uh, to think about. Um, and your suggestion, people in the West End are gonna hate me, who, Itchy at Itchy's Corner, I still don't know. I'll get a nasty email. But, um, I also just want to just raise this a- as a thought about moving to something a bit more ephemeral. In the sense that maybe we can have some, you know, like scholarships or things that aren't always permanent or physical, I mean, excuse me, so more like those experiences that we can kind of add on there. Uh, and I think that's kind of reflected a little bit in, in the, um, the Evanston policy a bit, uh, but just kind of moving away from physical things, uh, as well. Might be something to first think about, but like, I just thank you for, for doing this, and I'll give the comments to Jim.
All right. All right. So everybody, if you could take a look at that and get those comments to Jim, you know, next week or so, that would be great to move this along. Thank you, Karen, for, uh, picking the lead on this.
You're welcome.
No further discussion on that. Uh, we will go to the nine twenty, which is appropriate for tonight is to, um, discuss whether we should have a new policy. So I will admit, until I went in and said, this is ridiculous, we can't have meetings that go till twelve-thirty because I can't think that long. Um, and Lorraine pulled out a binder that said, here, here's the Board of Selectment Policy Book. So I think that's another conversation to be had down the road about reviewing that particular document because I don't think it's been looked at for a while. But I would like to propose that, um, the board consider, as we do with town meeting, having a hard s- uh, had proposing a hard stop as a policy at eleven PM for board meetings. Um, I think it's, um, I think, A, we don't think very well that late, and B, it's just not fair to the public to ask them to stick around till midnight to talk about town business. The proposal has a caveat, just as we do at town meeting. Should we be at, you know, a quarter to eleven, and we only have one more thing, we can vote to extend as necessary. Um, so.
I swear we, I swear we voted this years ago, Tony, or did we just discuss it?
Oh, we did it for, for town meeting. I don't know if we did it for our meetings.
Oh, yeah, I think it was town.
Okay.
I mean, we've talked about it. It's, it's all, it's all really, how tired are we? What have we talked about? Do we actually want to come back next week, or do we want to just plow through another twenty minutes?
Right.
I think, I think it's a good.
And I think it's great.
Good to have a time check and say, okay, has everyone spent?
Yeah, and so that, that was the, the last piece of it was, it was, it was strongly encouraged that the chair at ten-thirty looked at the schedule and said, yeah, we're not talking about financial policies again. Sorry, Nance. But at least the, it gives pe- public notice as well, and at ten-thirty, I think is a more reasonable time to say, hey, you know, you thirteen people waiting around, we're not gonna do items four and five tonight. Something like that. So I put the proposal, um, I would love your thoughts on the subject, and you have no thoughts on the subject. I would entertain a motion. Any other comments, concerns?
I love it. We, Donald Rumsfeld used to have the deal, there wouldn't be any chairs, you have to stand.
Yeah.
There, there are people that still do that at the State House. It's brilliant. Okay, everyone, stand up. Tim likes standing late. Yeah, what, Tony?
I was gonna say, move to approve select board policy sixty-six dash twenty-two. The town of Situate Select Board regularly scheduled meetings will not continue past eight o'clock.
I was waiting for someone to say, that's too late.
I'm sorry, isn't it sixty-six dash twenty-one?
Yeah, he was kidding. Yeah.
I'm sorry, sixty-six twenty-one. The town of Situate Select Board regularly scheduled meetings shall not continue past eleven PM unless, unless agreed upon by the entire board.
By Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. I am stunned. Nobody said, why not ten? This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Absolutely.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
We have unanimous consent, and I think we might make it tonight. So yay. Um, we are on to new business, which is to, uh, vote and discuss board and committee appointments. The Situate Harbor Cultural District, I believe they are all renewals. Um, and that's an exceptional.
Two new appointments and one, and the rest are renewals.
Sorry, there's an exceptional amount of pages in our backup, so I didn't get there. Um.
Page two hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Vignani. Hold on, I'm on page one right now. Okay. Uh, so on page two hundred, we have the first three are, are appointments. Um, and therefore, Mr. Bedrow, Michelle, they weren't on this before? I thought they were.
They were never appointed officially.
They were never appointed. Okay, so it would be to, to appoint for the first time our town administrator, um, our assistant to the town administrator and the, um, current president of, I believe he's still president, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, Mark DiNofrio. Um, and then the other, um, uh, five on here are reappointments.
Right.
And I can tell you, having worked with Situate Loves Local and the Harbor community, that all of these people pull their weight and some. They're, um, they've just really contributed so much to the community. So, uh, would anyone like to make a motion on these?
Can I move to them all?
Go ahead.
Art, can, can we just read them all?
I think you could do the first three together, and then you could do the reappointments together.
I think, yeah. Thank you, Lorraine. All right, do you have a motion?
Oh, okay. Move to appoint Jim Bedrow, town administrator, for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of, okay, I'm gonna take, take that back. Move to appoint Jim Bedrow, our town administrator, and move to appoint Michelle Sikazie, assistant to the town administrator, and move to appoint Mark DiNofrio from the Situate Chamber of Commerce as a representative, all for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law and online training program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, that, that motion requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries five zero. Do we have a second motion for reappointments?
Move to reappoint, oh, sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
Don't we need a first motion? Um, move to me, move to reappoint Janet Cronacio, Stephen Litchfield, Patrice May, Michelle Wood, Marie Flaherty. That's it. All for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
The motion carries, oh, sorry. I, I guessed your answer. Uh, the motion carries five zero. Thank you, uh, for that. Um, that will bring us to a discussion vote on a single drain layer license for Rad Sports. All the documentation has been provided, and it's been previewed by the DPW. Um, the credentials have been previewed by DPW. Would anyone like to discuss this matter? Would anyone like to make a motion on this matter?
Move to approve a drain layers license for R A D Corporation doing business as R A D Sports. Drain layers and sports?
Yep.
They do turf fields and stuff.
Fields. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none, it requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries five zero. That brings us to other business, which would be, uh, liaison reports. Uh, was, does anyone have anything they'd like to share with the board and the community? Ms. Conley?
I'd like to say that the Board of Health had quite an, an interesting meeting last night. They had, uh, the wind turbine, uh, people, the neighbors, uh, there to talk to the Board of Health. There was also a discussion about, uh, haulers, private haulers who do pick trash pickups in town uh, at making them, uh, subject to providing recycling, uh, to their customers, which they currently don't. And finally, a discussion about, uh, related to irrigation, private wells, and what the Board of Health can or cannot do in terms of, uh, private wells. So it was an interesting discussion.
Indeed.
Discussions.
Discussions.
Yeah.
Uh, any more liaison reports?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Um, I just want to note that now that, uh, Kyle Boyd, Boyd is on board um, as our planning director and planning of development directing, he has stepped into the South Shore Coalition meetings, and, um, they are deep in conversation about the concept of last mile transportation. Uh, so you take the train home, and then, then how do you get home without getting in your car kind of thing? Um, and also about regional EDC development, which is pretty exciting. That's their next, um, meeting conversation. Um, all right, any, no, that's it for liaison. Um, all right, any, no, that's it for liaison reports? Okay, um, I do want to just announce that um, before we go into course, oh, do you have the um, correspondence from the VFW post? I didn't see that. Are you gonna cover that?
I didn't, I got other stuff. I didn't see VFW.
Yeah, I, I got a late email. So the, the, the VFW post is doing a fundraising raffle. Um, and you can um, learn more about that on their Facebook page and um, um, they're just, it's a virtual, you get, you, you spend 10 bucks and you get, if you win, you get 150 scratch tickets, so. There you go. Um, so with that, um, do we have correspondence, Madam Clark?
We do. We got a lot of stuff from the MBTA because they're proposing a change in how they sell their tickets. Um, apparently they're proposing not selling tickets, especially on the commuter line, is what I sort of got the impression, not selling them on board. So they are having uh, some virtual public meetings so the people can hear about what their plans are and comment on them if they would like to. The uh, the dates uh, coming up are Thursday, March 25th at 6:00 PM and Tuesday, March 30th at 6:00 PM. Um, Lorraine, is it possible? Do you already have this on the, on the Situitt Facebook page? Or could we post it? Because getting access is, they've got a very long email address and
Sure.
No one will. No one will get it if I try to read it.
Sure, I can post it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did notice that the Easter Parade is coming up on March 28th from 10 to 2. It does start in North Situitt, but to read the route would be, we'd be here all night. So if, if we, if that's not posted on our uh, Facebook page as well, Lorraine, maybe we could do that too.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm letting people know that there was a question today on Situitt Monthly saying, it's not on Easter? And the answer is no, it's not on Easter. Um, the Easter Bunny has other places to be on Easter, apparently. So, but it, it was, it's been very successful and it modeled uh, the Santa Parade was modeled on, I think, the Easter Parade last year. So, um.
Karen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I zoned out. Did you, did you say that the Charlie Card destination was gonna be at Green Bush? I didn't know if you said that.
I did not say it.
Okay. But they, they. Know that, yeah.
Well, they, they've got a huge plan that, um, and again, they did send us a lot of stuff, but they're gonna have fair locations, not kiosks and other things all over different places. And they know that they have to go through the towns to get permission to put them outside of MP TA facilities. If, for example, they wanted to put something in downtown Situitt so you could buy your Charlie Card down there.
Right now, there's one scheduled at the Green Bush Station, so I did look that up.
Yeah.
Anyhow, just wanted to add that, sorry.
Well, yeah, that's all right.
I digress.
That's all right. Um, we did get a um, a notification from the Division of Local Services that municipalities have the opportunity to opt out of mosquito spraying. But in order to opt out of it, you have to have a plan to show the state. I don't know, Jim, if we've even considered opting out or.
Not that I would, no.
Okay. So, but just to let people know that we did receive that notification from the state. Um. We received copy of two letters, one to Congressman Stephen Lynch and the other to the Consul General of the Republic of Ireland. It is um, asking both of them to attend the Easter Rising Monument in Cole Parkway, uh, a dedication uh, on Sunday, April 25th, 2021 at noon. And that was from John Sullivan and uh, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Situitt as well.
And Karen, I think that date is wrong.
In, in their correspondence?
Well, I think we need to, it's not, you're not reading it wrong, the letter. The 25th is on Thursday, so it's not Sunday? Oh, is it April or March?
April.
April. Never mind, I'm asleep at the wheel again.
It's all right, we're fine.
Change that to 10 o'clock.
I know, exactly. I read it three times last night too.
That's all right. I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything.
No, it wasn't you.
I am planning on attending that. If anyone else is around, that'll be, it's really, it's kind of neat.
I think what was throwing me was the Easter Rising, which I know has nothing to do with Easter, right? Or does it?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, actually, it was the Easter Sunday Rebellion in Dublin.
Yeah.
It was on Easter Sunday. Okay. I think, I think that's it.
Okay.
The only other thing was the vegetation management plan for the MBTA.
Yeah, which was, I guess, let me see, I think it was anyway. Keolis is going to be spraying their uh, um, rights of way. Is that the gist of it, Lorraine? And they have to notify us.
Duly noted. A vegetation management.
Yep.
Cutting down the weeds.
Yeah. Uh, great, thank you, Madam Clark. Then it leaves us with one miss, uh, ma- one more matter on our agenda, which is adjournment and signing documents. Um, so.
Actually, we have approval of meeting minutes.
I skipped right over that. I'm so sorry. Approval of many, many minutes. I can't, this is why we can't meet late. Um, I would just note, there was one um, a cha- uh, change under the discussion about nitrogen um, replica, or whatever the, whatever the nitrogen swap thing. Um, in the minutes, it says that I, that it was attributed to me that this was a wetlands replication. If you could just insert like a wet, wetlands replication. Uh, it, it's a little misleading in the minutes. Um, but other than that, that's my only comment. Did anyone else have any comments on?
I'm sorry, like a wet, wetlands what?
Yeah, so the, the, the minute to read, something like Karen Canfield said, this is a wetlands replication. And what it.
We wanted to say like a wetlands.
Yes. I was trying to make the correlation that, you know, you can do that with wetlands and this is kind of what they want to do with the the nitrogen runoff. So. Um, that was my only change. Any other changes to the minutes? Then I'll entertain a motion as amended. Move that we, I don't have the date, so someone else has to make the motion. Everybody have it, Karen?
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm I'm all, I'm all over the place right now.
I got it.
Uh, move to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for March 9th, 2021.
As amended. Uh, moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mara dragging it out. Uh, the motion carries five one. Thank you very much. And now we will come to our final, which is adjournment and signing